Okay, staff, are we prepared to begin?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you very much. All right, good evening or late afternoon to everyone and welcome to the San Bruno City Council's special meeting of May the 24th, 2022 at 5:30 PM. May I please ask for a roll call?
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Here.
Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mason? Vice Mayor Mason? Okay, Mayor Rico Medina?
Here.
Here.
All right, thank you very much. Next item is public comments for items not on the agenda. There is a study session we're convening, which is to have a study session for the South Line Project that is on the agenda. But if there's anything else that somebody wishes to speak on at this time that is not on the agenda, please raise your hand at this time. You'll have up to three minutes. And if you could raise your virtual hand now and we'll take a moment to, we'll check.
I do not, did you see any hands up at the moment?
Thank you very much. Then we'll move into item number four, our study session for this evening. Conduct a study session for the South Line Project and Transportation/Infrastructure Municipal Service Agreement. And we will have some presenters from Lain Partners and also from some other consultants and from our public works staff. So at this time, who should we be turning this over to? Ah, Mr. Lee, I see you front and center. Thank you very much, and I will turn it over to you, please.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Matt Lee, Public Works Director of the City of San Bruno. If you can give me a moment, I'm trying to get the PowerPoint slide started. But what we have before us tonight is a study session for the South Line Development Project. And I will be here presenting with Marcus Gilmore of Lain Partners and Said Fakhri of TJKM, who's our consultant city traffic engineer. We will also have our staff, Haywan Ritchie, the deputy city manager, deputy city, sorry, I believe, the city engineer and the deputy public works director, to answer any questions with Joanna Clark, our principal engineer. We also have Patrick O'Keefe with Management Partners, who can answer any questions you may have as well. And so to get started, if we can go to the next slide, the purpose of this meeting tonight is to provide information on the development project at South Line and the approvals required for the project itself and the approvals for the city of San Bruno. This is an opportunity for council to ask any questions and comments after the presentation. And no action is actually required tonight, but approval will be scheduled for a subsequent meeting in June. Next slide. Just to earn ourselves, in terms of the agenda for tonight, we're going to start off with kind of a project overview on the South Line Development itself with Marcus Gilmore from Lain Partners. And we will then focus on the actual New Huntington Avenue/Sneath Lane intersection with Said Fakhri of TJKM. And we'll talk about the San Bruno intersection impacts, other transportation-related projects, and he'll kick back to me for a summary of meetings that we had with the community. We'll then talk about the Transportation/Infrastructure Municipal Services Agreement, and we'll talk about the approvals required for the project and for the city of San Bruno. And then we will be happy to answer any questions and next steps. Excellent. So as you can see here, the area highlighted in blue is the South Line Development Project. It's a 20-acre, 28-acre site of up to 2.8 million square feet of biotech office and R&amp;D development. As you can see with the orange dashed line, the project is solely within the city of South San Francisco, and they are the entity that is approving the project. I would like to also point out that to the southwest of this development is the Tanfran Development also, which may create some synergies with a biotech campus in that area as well. Next slide. So the question becomes, if this project is within the city of South San Francisco, why is San Bruno involved? Well, San Bruno's involved because as part of the development, there is a proposal to create a new intersection at the corner of Huntington and Sneath Lane behind Tanfran Mall at the moment. As you can see in the area in green, that's the proposed new intersection, which will approach into the city of San Bruno's right away. And because of that, an approach and permit and improvement agreements will be required. Furthermore, if you look in the image, there's a Tanfran Avenue. Tanfran Avenue is actually within the city of South San Francisco, and it's a South San Francisco street. However, just south of Tanfran, the buildings that you see there are residential homes with residents in the city of San Bruno. Because of that, we've been working diligently with South Line to, and the community, to discuss what Tanfran Avenue can look like after the development. Next slide, please. And with that, I would like to introduce Marcus Gilmore with Lain Partners to provide you a more detailed overview of the development project itself. Marcus?
Great. Thank you, Matt, and thank you, Mayor Medina, Vice Mayor Mason, and members of council for the opportunity to present to you tonight. I'm Marcus Gilmore, and I'm a principal with Lain Partners. I've had the pleasure of working with the city manager's office and members of staff for the past two-plus years on South Line, and I'll be providing a project overview tonight. South Line, which as Matt pointed out, is represented by the dark blue shape on the map. It's well-located, adjacent to several transit amenities, including the San Bruno Park Station, the San Bruno Caltrain Station, the South San Francisco Caltrain Station, SFO, the 101, 380, and 280 three ways. Next slide, please. So this is a view of our proposed site plan. The site consists of approximately 28 acres. I rounded up to 30. It currently contains old warehouse buildings and open land used for vehicle and equipment storage. The project includes six, six-story office and R&amp;D buildings, one campus amenity building located in the lower-left portion of the site plan. The amenity building is a two-story building, and the ground floor will have a sit-down restaurant, a coffee shop, an outdoor plaza, and a bike repair station. All of these ground floor uses will be available to the public. The project will also have two above-grade parking garages and several acres of open space, which will also be open to the community. Our proposed improvements include a new public roadway, which will bisect the site, significant bike and pedestrian connectivity improvements adjacent to the BART station and the Centennial Way Trail. And the project contemplates, as Matt mentioned, a new four-way intersection, which is in the lower-left side of the image, where Sneath and Huntington currently merge near the BART parking garage. The purpose of the new intersection is to improve vehicle access to the site by shifting cars off of the nearby South San Francisco and San Bruno streets and onto arterial roadways. I'd like to point out that the project will be built in phases. The first phase will be comprised of approximately 700,000 square feet, inclusive of the three buildings and parking garages below the new road. All of the offside improvements, including the new intersection, a cul-de-sac feature on Tanfran, and a one-acre community parklet on the north side of Tanfran Avenue, will also be included in the first phase. Next slide, please. This is a view of the site plan without the new Sneath-Huntington intersection. In this scenario, the project would be contained within South San Francisco city limits. The project would not construct the robust bike and pedestrian improvements near BART, and vehicle access to the site would flow through some of the tighter industrial streets of South San Francisco and the residential areas of San Bruno, including Tanfran Avenue. This no-intersection option has been studied as part of the SEQA analysis, and it is an alternative in the EIR. Next slide, please. So with the new intersection, project trips shown here in the red arrows are shifted away from neighborhood streets and onto arterial roadways via El Camino, Sneath, and Huntington Avenue. Next slide, please. This is a rendering of the proposed four-way intersection looking southeast towards SFO. The rendering has a north arrow compass on the lower left to help orient your view. You can see the new roadway, the campus amenity building, and the San Bruno residential area at the top of the image. The intersection would connect the new road with Sneath Lane, Huntington Avenue, and Maple Avenue, and it includes significant bike and pedestrian connections, crosswalks, and ramps. The project would connect Centennial Way Trail to BART, and we've agreed to contribute 4.2 million to the city to fill the current funding gap for the proposed two-way cycle track on Huntington. Next slide, please. I spoke earlier about the improvements we plan to make along Tanfran Avenue, and this view shows the current conditions of the area with the project site directly across the street from San Bruno Residence on Tanfran. You'll notice several driveways and warehouse doors along the frontage, which currently allow vehicle access to and from the site along Tanfran. Next slide, please. This is a view of Tanfran looking east towards Herman Avenue. The project site is on the left side of the image, and the Tanfran Avenue residences are on the right side. This photo was taken during a busy morning on the street. Next slide, please. This site provides a summary of the proposed improvements on Tanfran, which I'll cover in the remaining slides. The proposed modifications will reduce overall traffic and non-residential parking on the street, eliminate the current vehicle access to and from the project, create a calm cul-de-sac experience while still maintaining the Huntington Avenue East connection to Tanfran, and landscape parklet improvements will replace heavy industrial uses and commercial traffic. Next slide, please. This is a close-up view of the section along Tanfran. Matt had this image at the beginning of the presentation. So you can see all the existing driveways into the site will be eliminated, and they will be replaced by a one-acre parklet and pedestrian sidewalk. The cul-de-sac feature prohibits traffic overflow from the arterial roads onto Tanfran while still maintaining that connection from Huntington Avenue East. Next slide, please. So these next two images focus on the proposed final condition for Phase One. This is a view showing Tanfran Avenue facing west towards the BART parking deck. Next slide, please. Here is a close-up view of a section of the programmed areas in the community parklet. The shade structures, benches, and game tables were added to the design recently in direct response to feedback received during our community outreach meeting in April, which I believe some of you attended. Next slide, please. So in conclusion, South Line will act as a catalyst in transforming the areas adjacent to BART, the Centennial Way Trail, and Tanfran Avenue through robust roadway, transit connectivity, and landscape improvements. The project will deliver an economic boost for local businesses and provide job opportunities for nearby community members. And finally, the project will provide approximately $10 million in cash contributions directly to the city for various transportation improvements, including over $4 million, to help close the gap so that the cycle track on Huntington can be built. That concludes my portion of the presentation. Thank you very much.
So next, for the intersection portion, I would like to introduce Said Fakhri of TJKM, who's our consultant city traffic engineer. Said, are you there?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, before we start.
Yes.
How you have my hand up?
Yes, we also have a member of the public, too. So what I was wondering, let me ask staff what it works best. Do we want to go through the, as was outlined on the first slide, do we want to go through the whole presentation, or do you want to take it in sections for questions? Mr. Lee, or?
Sure, Javon Grogan, city manager. Mayor, I think it would be best to complete the presentation and then have questions as per our normal process.
I agree. So what we would do is allow staff to go through presentation, and we'll go to council for questions on the presentation, not comments, questions. Then we'll go to the public for their input and questions, come back to council for any additional, any comments at that time. So appreciate, now that we have that, and I appreciate the public members being patient. Mr. Lee, I'll turn it back over to you.
Mr. Mayor, the point of me raising my hand was to notify that the slide deck wasn't being proceeded, or being moved ahead, so I couldn't see what was being talked about. It was stuck for a little bit, so that was it.
Yeah, I saw on the second to the last slide, it kind of paused. Yeah, I saw on the second to the last slide, it kind of paused, wasn't moving, what you said.
Right.
Yeah, but I think we got the last one in. Thank you, Mr. Medina.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me quite?
There was the, hold on, sir. So there was this, the last slide, and then the projected things were the, one where it kind of skipped or stopped, paused for a while. So why don't we just pause here, let that be read by council and/or community? And then why don't we then proceed forward, and then, so I'll let the next chair for the presentation. Go to the right slides.
I think this is the right slide. Good afternoon, city mayor and council member. My name is Said Fakhri. I'm consultant, City of San Bruno Traffic Engineer. So I'll start with the project, next slide actually, which is the new intersection. We're going backward. So the new intersection that was pointed out, these new intersections, like?
Is this a slide you wish to be on, or can you help?
This is the slide, yeah, the new intersection. So that's where I'm starting. The new intersection creates an intersection. I think somebody's clicking happily.
Oh, there appears to be a technological delay. Right now, what we are seeing, and we are hosting this PowerPoint at City Hall, is slide 18. Is that up for those of you that are remote?
It is.
Okay.
Now it's slide 18, correct.
Okay.
Let's just jump on slide 19 now.
Then go forward one.
Okay, we are still seeing slide 18. Let us stop sharing, and we will attempt to reshare.
And city manager, correct, I think we were seeing slide 18 as you were trying to go to 19, yes?
The slide 18 showing.
Yes.
Yes. So the new intersection actually replaces the existing curve at Huntington-SNEAT Lane, which is currently a curve with no intersection. And this new intersection will provide access with the new road to the new development. What this new intersection does is actually providing access, as pointed out, from arterial streets. And also, this new intersection improves access from the north to Tanforan Center via connection from South Maple. Currently, South Maple is not connected to Tanforan Center. And also, the new intersection will be part of the San Bruno Cycle Track project that's currently under design phase. Next slide, 19, please. I guess there's a little, oh, okay. So as pointed out by the developer, there is a no-intersection option at the Sequo documents. So this slide shows with the yellow arrows, the path to existing development, which is shaded in green, and also if there is no new intersection. The red line is the border between City of San Bruno and South San Francisco. So the yellow, as you can see from San Bruno, people are exiting 101. Currently, they have a choice to turn right on San Mateo and access through the back to Tanforan and get access to the development, which will continue like that if there is no new access. And some people go north on Huntington Avenue, and then you have to turn right on Herman and go up to the project. And also, from the north, from South San Francisco, they can take some of those industrial streets, Dollar Street, and other street to access the site. And as you see the pattern of traffic, it is usually, it is away from arterial, which is used for accessing major development through industrial street, through the residential street, and that's why you saw that picture of Tanforan with very heavily trucks and traffic on a residential street. Next slide, please. Slide 20. With the new intersection that's shown, so cross yellow, that's where the new intersection is created. Traffic moves, looking at San Bruno from south, they can directly access Huntington and go to that new intersection that accesses the site. Some people may still take San Mateo, they have that choice, but from Herman, traffic has been removed. Also, direct access from SNEAT, which is from 280, access from 380 via Al Camino Real, and also from the north, you have access to this intersection, which is, which will be designed as four-way intersection. So as you can see clearly from the yellow arrows, which showed the pattern of traffic, the path of traffic existing with new, with no new intersection, to this yellow path of traffic, which has moved all the traffic to where basically one wants the major access to be from arterial to this new development. Next slide, please. There's a little bit delay, I guess, by the time it gets to me. Slide 21.
Yeah, just pause it, still is at 20, so hold on. We're at 21. We're at slide 21, please go ahead.
Sure, yes. So you can see the arrows to the development without any new intersection. So you can still see from Herman taking access and making left at Tanforan, and also going up to Dollar and accessing the site via the new street outline. And also from Maple coming south without access from Huntington and SNEAT, which shows this is like near the driveway, how the access will take place with no new intersection, as pointed out. Also, there is no connection to the BART for pedestrian and bicyclists, which will have a hard time to access from development to BART, and also no improvement in connectivity into BART and Tanforan Center. This is an option, as pointed out, is an alternative in the EIR.
We're on slide 22.
It's like five-second delay for me, probably. I still don't see it, but might come any time.
Said, I believe the mayor.
I see it now. So we are on slide 22. Slide 22 actually shows the existing roadway system. Again, you can see the city border, a red line on south of Tanforan, and also the development at the left upper-right corner, and then the curves, a SNEAT curve into the Huntington. And on the south, you see a parking lot via the current BART parking structure. Next slide, please. And then this is the proposed condition, which you can see that SNEAT Lane and the curve has been removed with Huntington, creating an intersection with Maple Avenue and new road, and also a connection with this intersection to Centennial Trail. Improvements, pedestrian and bicycle improvement to access BART, and creating a friendly kind of intersection for pedestrian to access BART and Tanforan Center. Next slide, please. Again, this shows a bird-eye view of existing...
Excuse me, I apologize.
No problem.
We're on slide 22 currently. It's not moving as quickly as we would all like it to. Just want to let you know. It's hard to follow when we're...
No, 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 no. I appreciate that, because that's why I've been trying to be mindful. I'm seeing 24 personally. Vice Mayor, what slide are you seeing, please, and Mr. Hamilton?
24 here.
Slide 23.
So currently, we're on slide 24, and Mr. Medina, would you do me a favor and let me know when it's caught up, and then that should be okay for the vice mayor then?
Still on 22 right now.
Councilmember Medina, did it get better at the beginning, and then it's gotten, now it's just gotten worse, or has it been bad this whole, since the new speaker took over?
It's been pretty slow the whole time, largely.
I was just going to suggest maybe unsharing and resharing to see if that, I guess.
This is probably the first time that I've seen it in all the, all the time on Zoom, that it was this lacking. It's just really hard to follow when we're not on the same page. That's pretty quick. 24?
Yeah, so we were here, everybody on slide 24. This shows a bird-eye view of existing curve at SNEAT in Huntington. It shows Maple, it shows one-way access from Huntington East to Tanforan, and it shows Tanforan having access continuation and not a cul-de-sac. And then next slide, please. So everybody hoping seeing 25. Now you see a Tanforan access kind of cut off from Maple, but still have one-way access from Huntington Avenue East. The new intersection is at upper-right corner, and then you can see more improvement at Huntington and BART parking. You can see a bus making a left turn to the other driveway at parking garage, and that's also created newly by the project and amenities, pedestrian, and access to Centennial Trail. Next slide, please. So we are all on 26 slide. This new intersection, as proposed, is located partially in San Bruno. The intersection construction will require San Bruno encroachment permits, permit, and transportation projects include intersection mitigation and related street improvement. As you can see in the other slides, this project has some impact on some of the San Bruno intersections. The next slide, please. We are on 27, so developer prepared an operation analysis for level of service at intersections on San Bruno. As you know, that the nowadays, the DMT, vehicle mile travel, is used for Sequo purposes, but still agencies like San Bruno, we ask for an operation analysis to look at the intersections. So this study was prepared by consultants, Ferran Peers and Kimby Home, and then San Bruno Consultant Traffic Engineer and staff peer reviewed the traffic impact and provided comments to the developer and their engineer and to City of South San Francisco. Five intersections in San Bruno requires modification, and since they have been impacted, they will get impacted by the development, partially. Next, next slide, now 28. So these five intersections are SNEAT and 280 on and off ramp, San Bruno and Cherry intersection, which requires some signal improvements. The SNEAT 280 ramp requires some geometrical modification, adding a lift and pocket. Al Camino-SNEAT lane intersection will require some signal equipment and signal timing to improve it. Huntington-Herman intersection is the one that's currently two-way stop from Herman and Forest, and that will be, it will need to be signaled after the project is fully developed. And Al Camino-Real and San Bruno intersection also requires signal timing modifications to get to an acceptable level of service. And next slide, 29, please. So there's a lot of detail at this slide. These are the intersections that were studied as part of the development. These are all San Bruno intersection or Caltrans intersection, but within the City of San Bruno jurisdiction. So this slide, what it shows is the existing condition today, and it shows the, what we call level of service, which is a measure of delay, and it's designated by letter A through F. So for San Bruno, the standard is green, level of service D, which is an acceptable level of delay. As you can see on this slide, most of the intersections currently are acceptable, however, there are intersection marked yellow, which is a level of service E, which is a little bit more than our standard of acceptable level of service, meaning that the delay is a little bit higher than standard. It's good to point out that these are showing delays at only peak hours, peak traffic hours, which is either AM peak hour or PM peak hour, or both. So we have shown the worst case if it's AM or PM. It's not all throughout the day, however, this is what's existing condition now. Next slide, please. I'm not seeing 30 yet, but whenever it comes.
For me, I am seeing it currently.
I'm still stuck on 29. Everybody else, 30?
I'm seeing the vice mayor, Mr. Hamilton, myself, at least, are all saying thumbs up to 30.
Unfortunately, this time I'm not seeing 30, but 30 should show level of service, oh, here, actually, level of service at intersection with only growth at 2040 horizon, which is really a project to develop, and that's what we usually look at the long term. Oops, went to 31. Okay, back to 30. So this shows the level of service at 2040 without project, just the growth in the area. So as you can see, some intersection red is popping up at San Bruno and San Mateo at San Bruno in Huntington, also a red at off-ramp, on-ramp at 280. Also a red at off-ramp, on-ramp at two eighty south. You can see a red. So this is just the growth that deteriorate without doing anything. And just the development in the vicinity in the area. Considering a growth factor that's acceptable, deteriorate some of the traffic signal intersections and the delay increase. Next slide, please. Slide thirty-one should show whenever it comes, a growth plus project. Are you seeing thirty-one yet?
I am. Vice Mayor saying no.
It just switched.
Okay, I'm seeing two. So, so if everybody's seeing it, this slide shows growth plus project. Basically, what project contribute is in a range of three percent to ten percent of volume to these intersections in the AM or PM or both. So you can see that basically the red hasn't increased, but couple of yellow intersection is popping out in addition to what the growth actually deteriorated. So this, this shows twenty forty considering the growth in the project. Next slide, please. And everybody can see thirty-two, I'm seeing thirty-two. Okay, so this, this slide shows the level of service after the project improvements. That means the project will contribute fund to improve these intersections to the city. And these intersection, the improvement was discussed in previous slides. Some of them just require signal timing adjustments. Some of them will require signal modification. And at least one of them at the two eighty off-ramp and Sneed, that requires geometric adding a left turn pocket to improve the flow of traffic. So you can see all within green, which is an acceptable level of service, except Al Camino Real is Sneed, which is still yellow. Although it's preferred to have a D level of screen, but in this case, yellow. On Al Camino Real, basically Caltrans accept level of service. E for major arterial that has a significant, regional significant is still acceptable. Sometime you can't do any modification because of the capacity and you don't want to really add lanes and right of issue, things like that. So some intersection you have to live with it. And this is not beyond really the range of unacceptable. It's not an F level of service. And next slide, please. So some of the other contribution by the project is the police department traffic control measures, which is implementing the, looking at these intersection and monitoring it. And also street beautification and bicycle project, as it was pointed out. The Huntington Cycle Track, which is currently Phase One is under design. There's a gap for Phase Two, which project will contribute to fill the gap. With that, I'm going to turn back to the Director of Public Works. Thank you.
Hi, it's me, Matt, again, the Public Works Director. I just thank everyone for the patience. I guess we now realize what happens when lawyers have their game four in a post-pandemic world. So there's probably a little bit of lag just from the streaming of the game. But hopefully you guys can see slide thirty-four. We want to talk about the outreach that has been done to date for this project. Lame Partners developer had two community meetings in 2020. And most recently in April twentieth this year, there was an in-person community meeting. As you can see in the picture to the right, where staff, city staff are also included to answer any questions about the project and potentially some of the intersection. The city of San Bruno held a virtual meeting on May third of this year and also sent out a survey for residential parking program. For those that were not able to make any of these community meetings, whether virtual or in person, more information can be found at the city of San Bruno website, which is sanbruno.ca.gov/southernline. Or the South San Francisco website, which is construction.ssf.net/pound or hashtag, depending on what generation you're aligning yourself to. And then the developer has their detailed information on the project's development at corp.co/southernline. Next slide, please. The results of these meetings were that there are generally positive comments on the project itself. The discussion over the Tanfran area, the top preferences expressed for features in the park that included the shade structure, the pollinator garden, and the natural clay area. The resident parking survey results indicated that forty-seven percent of the respondents did not want a parking permit, did not want permit parking, but twenty-four percent of them did want more parking limit signs and more enforcement. Eighteen percent declined the answer, to answer. And six percent wanted to limit truck parking and remove parking limits on Tanfran Avenue. Next slide. And so what we intend to bring to council on the July, sorry, June fourteenth meeting is action on the Transportation Infrastructure Municipal Services Agreement that we described earlier. That agreement sets for a developer obligation of funds of about ten point six million dollars in transportation projects to be determined by the city at the time of the new intersection encroachment permit issuance. Credit can be given to the developer for the construction for their portion of the Huntington Cycle Track at the intersection. And an alternative payment for intersection mitigations can be applied if the new intersection is not built. As part of the agreement, the city also agrees not to oppose the project itself. Next slide, please. And so in terms of the approvals for the project, there are multiple approvals for the intersection. Because it resides in San Bruno, there will be an action for the Transportation Infrastructure Agreement Project on June fourteenth, like we earlier described. And after that, there's a ministerial approvals with staff for the improvement agreement and the encroachment permit agreement. There's also an acquisition agreement with BART and encroachment permits because a portion of the right of way of the intersection also falls within BART property. Because South San Francisco is the agency that is approving the projects, they will have the responsibility of approving the E-permit, the design review, and the environmental approvals. Next slide, please. In terms of the timeline of what is occurring, we currently have a study session today. And at the June fourteenth council meeting, that's when we'll be approving the transportation agreement. That will be before council for approval. After that, then the South San Francisco Planning Commission hearing will occur on June twenty-second. And then the South San Francisco City Council hearing, which will certify the EIR and the project approvals on July twenty-twenty-two. Once that is done, they'll move forward with the design component of the project and the BART property acquisition and encroachment permits. And the city encroachment permits and improvement agreements will be executed in twenty-twenty-three. That concludes our study session. I'm here with our team to answer any questions anybody may have or to receive comments.
Thank you very much all for your presentation. What we'll do at this time, if I could, please, to the colleagues for questions on the presentation. Councilmember Hamilton?
Thank you very much for the detailed presentation. I just have a quick question regarding the, the community outreach meetings. Are there any metrics or anything about how well attended those were? I attended the, the virtual community meeting on, on May third, but it was on, you know, it was virtual. So and as a participant, I couldn't tell if I was in a, in a full room or a, or an empty one. And also the in-person community meeting that was on April twentieth. Do we, do we have any numbers about how well attended it was? And then also similar, the, we, we see the, you know, we went through the results of the, the parking survey. Just curious as to what the return rate was on those, on those surveys. You know, how well received were they and how much participation we got? Thank you.
Hey, Councilmember Hamilton. I think I'll defer to Deputy Director Haywon Ritchie to answer the questions in terms of the attendance for the May third meeting and the response, response rate for the surveys. Haywon?
Yes, thank you, Matt. Good evening, our mayor, council members. Haywon Ritchie, city engineer. Regarding how well the meetings were attended, the in-person, I believe there were approximately ten or so. Some of those ten did have, you know, multiple family members, like a family may have shown up or a couple from the same household showed up. And so I would say about ten or so, ten maybe dozen signed in. And then regarding the, the May third, which is the virtual meeting that we held, there were just, just under twenty attendees, not including the panelists.
Haywon, can you provide the response rate for the surveys?
Yes, and so each of the straits, I want to see the response rates range anywhere from three to five per street. And so that would include Tanfran, Pacific, a couple on Herman, a couple on Huntington that were north of Bay Shore, Pacific Avenue. And so if we put those together on five streets, I would say about, you know, twenty or so responded. And just to give you an idea of the sample size, the entire neighborhood where we outreach to about a hundred.
Great, so twenty percent return, that's not, that's not bad at all. Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Medina.
Yeah, I wanted to first do a little, a little bit of a disclosure of, I've had a phone conversation with Marcus on the project in June of 2019 at the initial phasing of, when we first heard about this project. I've also attended a Zoom meeting with staff and lame partners earlier this year. And I did attend the first community meeting that was held there on the project premises. I have a number of questions. The first one will be, will be about the traffic generated. We got colors and level of service indicators of the traffic, but what are the numbers of these vehicles that will be coming to the site? I understand that there was a traffic study, but I'd be interested in to just understand the volume of those vehicles. On slide twenty, no traffic was shown using Herman Avenue. I'm wondering if maybe that was just an oversight? Or is there something going on there at Herman that won't allow access to the site? On slide thirty, the amount of growth is based on a straight percentage of population? Does it include any of the projects that are coming to San Bruno over, over the years? On, on the layout of the new intersection, it showed additional landscaping, and I know the landscaping along Huntington is, could use some modification, it's pretty dated. It's in pretty poor shape. I am also concerned with, with the percentage of attendees. There are approximately a hundred and forty-two homes in the area of the Fifth Edition and, and getting ten people, it seems to me I'm a little bit on the low side. And twenty isn't really that much better. It's better than nothing, but, but I, I believe we had better attendance when we did, the city managed the Scott Street closure, the discussions about the grade separation there. So I'm concerned about the community input. I did, I did go to the site in the last few days and did talk to a couple residents and they weren't aware of it, got something, but they didn't, you know, it's just kind of hard to attend a meeting at three o'clock and, and for the first one. I have additional questions regarding design, but I, I'm just going to go ahead and pause now because I do want to hear from the public and my colleagues. But for the design of the intersection and sections and, and costs for that intersection, what the traffic impacts that are going to be there. So I'll pause for now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Does staff or others want to address the questions that Mr. Medina has brought forward thus far?
Sure, let us, again, I'll turn it over to Public Works Director. Yeah, so I, that was a lot of questions, but we'll start first with the traffic and transportation element. I'm going to pass it first off to Sadie Fockre for, for response.
Thank you, Matt. I have noted three questions, but I may have forgotten. So first question for traffic was the number of trips from this project. Obviously, this is a large project, twenty-eight acres, seven building. But the trip generation is a standard ITE, Interstate of Transportation Engineer trip generation. How many trips creates during the AM peak hour and how many trips during PM peak hour? Those are standard, however, I don't have the numbers. But what I can say that after the trip generation, then it's a trip distribution, which is kind of an art and science where they will go in the morning, which direction will they come? But one of the important things to realize, this project near BART and Caltrain, so there is a number of trips assigned, standard trips assigned to those public transportation, which is again standard. And also the project has a very aggressive transportation demand management, which encourage ride sharing, bicycle and others. But actually, they are targeting single occupancy driving, only forty-five percent, forty-five percent reduction in single occupancy. So those are all consideration when you look at the number of trips. Again, the percentage, if you look at percentage, as I mentioned, if you look at the current volume, the project will add three percent volume to these, to those intersection. The range of three percent to ten percent. Obviously, the new intersection is almost fifty percent of the trips or more from that new intersection. So those are kind of general trips and trip reduction and the presence of major public transportation facilities, including Al Camino Real, which is considered as a transit corridor because of the frequent buses. Why it was not, the second question is Herman wasn't shown. Yeah, there is, that wasn't shown because if, if we could show it and some people might take that from Huntington, turn right to Herman and go that way. However, it seems the number will be less because they have an access directly to the. will be less because they haven't access directly to the site. But yes, that that we could possibly have shown. Some people might take that street still. Uh the growth, you mentioned the growth. So the growth is generally um the economic data and N B C planning and also cities planning, county planning. Those growth are not just for population. It's growth in the job and considering future projects that will come to the area in twenty forty. So that's the total growth, not just population growth, which is a standard in in traffic. You look at at the job growth in the area and also population growth, housing growth, and and major projects that you know is coming to the area. Uh those were the questions I got, but maybe I maybe I missed something.
No, I think I think you covered most of it on the transportation component. Um in terms of the intersection layout, uh the Huntington intersection, the developer is responsible for kind of their limits of work. Uh we can definitely look into the landscaping that Councilmember Medina is referencing. Um I'm assuming it's outside of the limits of work that intersects. And so we can look into that and and get back to you on that one. Um I think there was a concern on the amount of attendees that attended the uh some of the community meetings. Uh I'll start first with our Deputy Director Haywon Ritchie to talk about the effort we did for our meeting, and then we can then pass it off to Marcus Gilmore, talk about his outreach efforts for his community meetings.
Um yes, I can touch on um the community meeting for Lay Partners since we were there on April twentieth. Um notices were mailed, and then our staff um had hand-delivered the parking notices to the areas north of Bay Shore North Circle. Um and let them know that those surveys could either be emailed, um they could be dropped off at the community meeting, or they could be submitted to our offices. Um so there are multiple attempts to advise the residents of the meetings that were occurring. And then subsequently, for the April, sorry, the May third meeting, um notices went out um for that meeting as well. And generally, responses were, you know, very positive in the virtual meeting as well as the in-person. Um but if Marcus, if you wanted to discuss, you know, outreach on your side for the April twentieth meeting, um have a great time.
Yeah, uh thanks, Haywon. I'll take my hand down. Um so the open house meeting, um Councilmember Medina, um was our meeting onsite. Um we targeted the residents on Tan Fran Avenue only for that meeting, because we wanted their direct feedback for the parklet features. So I think there's like twenty-two homes on Tan Fran Avenue. And so that was the target audience for that specific meeting, because it was direct feedback we were looking for for the parklet design. So we got ten out of twenty-two. Um I'm sure there's more people living in those homes, but not a bad percentage when you think about the uh the audience we were looking to get. And then I can answer the the question regarding the landscape improvements on Huntington. Um I have an exhibit. Um I don't know if I'm able to share a screen, um but i- am I able to do that, Matt?
Yeah, you should be able to, your house.
Okay. All right, can everyone see this?
Uh we see it at City Hall.
Okay. Um so, you know, the the intersection which we've been focused on is is here. I'm circling in red. I'm sure there'll be a little bit of a delay. But the actual extent of the improvements are significant, and they extend down to uh the crosswalks. In fact, we're adding a new crosswalk here to the BART station. Um so this center median will be improved in the landscape all along Huntington Avenue, adjacent to the new cycle track will be part of the project. And there's also landscape and hardscape improvements along the west side of Huntington Avenue. So it's not just the intersection. The goal is to improve the activity to the BART station, um so we can drive people to use that public transit amenity.
Thanks, Marcus. That's very noble. Thank you.
Well.
Thank you very much. Uh Vice Mayor Mason?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, and um thank you for the additional outreach that you did since the last of meetings. I know that came up in one of our previous thirty sessions and for providing interpretation. Um I also attended the online meeting, so I think our number of ten is quickly dwindling down to how many of those were residents. Um but I did want to ask about the um realistic number of employees that are expected there. We've heard a broad range over the last year or so. And so I'm curious to know how many employees are expected, and then whether there's growth projections, what that is, and then whether the parking situation has changed since the last time this has come to us. Um because the parking requirements are um minimal compared to San Bruno's parking requirements. So um if we could get those answers, that would be great. Thank you.
Yes. So Marcus, can you kind of talk about the projected uh staffing levels?
Yeah. Yeah, a good question. So um, you know, the amount of employees really depends on the use and the tenants, Vice Mayor Mason. If it's a life science or lab tenant, then the density is um anywhere from three fifty, one person per three hundred and fifty to five hundred square feet. If it's tech, you know, um then it can be as 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 high as one person per two hundred and fifty square feet. So given that range and the potential square footage, we're looking at anywhere from between seven to nine thousand employees. Um to answer a question about the parking ratio, um so the parking ratio is currently contemplated to be one point six five per thousand, with the ability to go up to two point oh per thousand with valet. And just to to finish that thought, as Saidi pointed out earlier, the city of South San Francisco is requiring a forty-five percent single vehicle trip reduction, T D M program, which would be the highest in their city.
You what what does that mean? Can you push out a little bit for us?
Sure. So um basically, what it means is we have to implement um measures that reduce the sink. It it reduces people driving alone in their cars to the site. So there's a program. Um, you know, some of the features will include like carpool matching services, the Caltrain shuttle service, um bike parking, lockers, guaranteed ride home programs, an onsite T D M manager. And so that that is a program that the city will enforce, South San Francisco will enforce, and there'll be annual monitoring required to make sure we hit those metrics.
And what happens if those metrics are not hit?
Um, I think there's, I believe there's fines. Um I'd have to defer to a transportation expert, but I I believe it's fines.
Okay. Is that something maybe we could get a report back on?
Yes.
The other the other follow-up um is um I had asked also about in one of our previous meetings, um about the community that is already there, that's already impacted by parking, and whether um the owners would be open to allowing the residents to park in the garage once it's built in the evenings. And I didn't know if that conversation had gone any further. Um I have to say, Matt, I think this is before you had started, um but I don't think we've had a conversation um since then. But I do believe Mr. Gilmore was part of the earlier conversation. So I am curious to know if there was um more discussion around that.
Uh, yeah, we um we spoke a little bit about this question with staff and South City staff. We certainly can explore a little bit more. Um from my perspective, there's some security and operational challenges, um and how you monitor which who are actual residences, um what happens when the gates go down, because we want to keep the gates down at night so people aren't leaving vehicles in there um and abandoning them. Um and we want to make sure that there's uh room for employees to park there as well. So I think I think there's more work to be done there, but my initial reaction is that there's several security and operational challenges that uh would make this tough to implement.
I would just um request, and other council members can um share their belief either way, but um I think parking garages appear to figure those out um throughout the Bay Area. And so if that is a possibility, or um that would be wonderful for the community to have that opportunity, because parking is already impacted, and it's only going to be more impacted when you talk about these high numbers. And the high number of employees is going to have an adverse impact on the already impacted parking during the day. Because even with all these wonderful incentives, there are still going to be people that are driving to work, and they're gonna park in the lot. And if the lot doesn't have enough parking for all the employees, they're gonna park on the street. So um I do think that provided the um the huge, this is a drastic change for that community, um that this is really a minimal request um of of the developer to look into those options as an alternative for the community. Um other than that, I think the development, it is not in San Bruno. Um it looks lovely. Um but with that said, you know, we do have to really look at the impacts. We're we're talking about very large impacts to um to the community, both in traffic and in parking, um and in cost of living that that are very real. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Salazar?
Thank you. So um I um my connection was a little choppy at times, so I apologize if if I'm gonna ask something that was addressed in the presentation. But um I I did want to also um uh thank uh um the developer for um the doing that reach that they did. You know, we don't usually get this amount of uh involvement in projects that don't fall within our within our C limits, uh but being that it's right on the uh right on the border. Um we just certainly do appreciate that residents were taken into consideration. And along those lines, I um I was wondering if there's gonna be any recourse for San Bruno and its residents. If you're in construction, there are impacts um that we normally would address and have jurisdiction over had they been within our borders. And uh our neighbor to the north, I'm I'm sure they do a lot of development, and I'm sure they have um some pretty exacting standards of their own. But if if there are um concerns from our residents, uh will there be um some having you for us to um to seek relief uh for them or or make sure that their issues are addressed during the construction? And is that something that uh could potentially be uh included in an agreement? Um so the only agreement that we'll have based on the uh on the work on the intersection.
Thanks, Councilmember Salazar. That's a good question. Um so typically, as part of these large uh development efforts and part of the E I R, there are mitigation efforts for construction that has to be strictly followed. Uh mitigation monitoring is one of the uh requirements that are part of the E I R development uh during construction. Um you know, like most other developments, any development within any city jurisdiction, if a resident calls that is not, say, a resident of that city, but they're impacted by the construction, I'm pretty sure South San Francisco would respond accordingly. I don't think they're gonna bifurcate that, you know, it's San Bruno residents saying that it's noisy and and not do anything about it. Um but I I will say this, our residents will probably call us first. Uh we definitely will, uh you know, when when construction begins, we'll we'll have the numbers uh for who they can reach to um for for those concerns, uh whether it's South San Francisco to do the enforcement or to the contractor. Um I can have Marcus jump in and provide uh any additional details.
Yeah, thanks, Matt. I'll I'll just add that there'll be conditions of approval um as well, Councilmember Salazar, which will further tighten the the reins on the on the construction requirements. Um and we plan to host a pre-construction meeting with our general contractor and the residents, so we can answer questions in real time in person before we start work out there. That's really important. Um and so we'll make sure to do that.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, and we have the mailing, we have the mailing list for all residents, so it's easy for us. And we'll work with staff to set that meeting up.
Okay, thank you. And I also had some questions around around the traffic. Um so that there was um it the presentation mentioned that there would be some changes to some of the existing signals at different intersections up at Cherry. And I I was wondering if if those involve replacement of equipment, and if there was any um intelligence that goes into how those signals will operate. Are they gonna be monitoring traffic in real time and and making decisions on on delays? Or is it something that gets pre-programmed? And uh also, once once that new equipment is in, does that become the city's property? And is the city then responsible for maintaining it?
Saidi, can you answer the first part of that question?
Uh sure. Um some of the intersections that I'm currently involved in reviewing, uh some of the concepts. So the the new intersection, as you saw, those are preliminary concept. It's not in design. Uh but during the design, city of South San Francisco and city of San Bruno will review. My thought is that new intersection has to be connected to the intersection on San Sinee Lane, and also the new intersection you saw at Bar Drive Way, and also the left turn, uh bus left turn to the parking lot. Those have to be all hardwired connection and coordinated signal, at least those three, four intersections within the. Some of the other intersections that are far apart, like Cherry Avenue in San Bruno, those are intersections that currently is not part of any system. But yes, the improvement there, uh for example, the detection of vehicles and all those will be current through cameras and all of those. And and yes, the controllers generally is the most updated controllers that is the computer uh monitoring that intersection. So also, the San Bruno intersection is is currently under the work, but because of YouTube, and there are some improvement. But this project will add some more improvement, more make it more efficient. So I I I'm I'm hoping I answered some of your questions, at least.
Yeah, yeah. And you spoke a lot about about standards in terms of how you you do the evaluation. So um I I know that it's it's early in the game, but um you also just, you know, kind of talking about, you know, uh current standards around the technology and and traffic monitoring, everything. Would would could that potentially or would that potentially include running fiber between those areas um to to get those uh those connections? I know that we participate in some portion of the uh the smart corridor that Sam Trans implemented in El Camino, and portions of San Bruno Avenue are already fiber-connected for for those things. And so could this be a potential extension of that uh of that system? Or are we are we, you know, considering probably lower tech options for this?
Uh none of the options will be lowered. However, uh there has to be a a system to be coordinated. Sometimes it's like a corridor, like along El Camino Real. Uh I did not see an example of co- corridor nearby, but as I mentioned, those three, four signals with the new signals, those are so close that has to be coordinated. And that coordination, uh we haven't been specific yet, but it will work out. It's either through copper wire or fiber optics, sometimes also through uh wireless connection. So the technology is there, and uh once the time come for staff and consultant to review those and work with the signal and phasing and make it more efficient. So there might be further studies needed, how to design these intersection, whether it be beneficial, how to make it easier for pedestrian and bicyclists. The detail hasn't been worked out. But sure, there will be uh state-of-the-art technology that the city should look at. If I'm here, I look for that on behalf of the city.
Okay. All right. Thank you. No problem. We have a lot of city on fiber that runs uh throughout that area. So uh there there are some So there are some potential synergies there. So I think that's, actually, the last question is a very, very minor one. But I noticed that, you know, currently the way Huntington is configured, it sort of hooks into a little J there at the end and turns into SNEE. And then the new configuration will have SNEE running into a small portion of that remainder of Huntington and then turning into Tanfran. And I was wondering, is there a potential therefore renaming any of that? So it's not as confusing in the future, so you don't have this little section of Huntington that's sort of dangling there, but really no longer part of an extension. It's now all of a sudden a hard left. And so it seems like that little piece would be dangling. And since there's no, no one has a frontage there, maybe it would be easier just to have either SNEE go all the way to that intersection rather than have a remainder of Huntington on there. And I think that's something that might fall on our public works.
Yeah, that's a great point, Councilmember Salazar. We'll definitely look into that.
All right, thank you.
And I'll try to make quick because I know we've had a member of the public who's been with us. As their hand up. One, I also, similar to Councilwoman Medina, I was at the physical location for the, that was held on Tanfran Avenue. With the staff, Mr. Gilmore, you know, et cetera, so for myself. Also, I know Councilwoman Medina talked about the participation and what grade separation, the grade step had done at Scott. I think it was thanks to Mr. Fitting and also the potential of 30-plus homes being taken. And that will get all members' interest very quickly. My question, and then we'll go to the public, is as far as the roads, we all, all colleagues here hear about the streets and roads conditions. So once the project is concluded, will those roads, i.e. Tanfran Avenue, or those that are getting the traffic flow for the construction, will those be brought back to condition if not better?
Yeah, I can answer that, Matt, and thank you, Mayor, for the question. Yeah, so the scope of work for Tanfran Avenue contemplates a grind and overlay and a restriping. So that will get replaced, not just pothole filling. So the whole roadway will be grinded and overlaid.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Now I want to go to members of the public. I want to thank Mr. Delatorre for his patience, and if we can bring him in, please.
Okay, Mr. Delatorre, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear?
Yes, okay.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Medina, Vice Mayor Mason, and San Bruno. My name is David Delatorre. I'm the Secretary Treasurer of the Laborers Union, Local 261. We're a building and trade union. I'm also a lifetime resident of the city of San Bruno. As a San Bruno resident, I'd like to express my strong support for this proposed project. It's projects like these that create job opportunities for our members to contribute to their healthcare, help piecemeal their pensions, to retire with dignity, and support their families. Again, I just wanted to take this opportunity to express my strong support for this proposed project and strongly encourage for you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Are there other speakers, please?
I do not see any other hands up.
Thank you. We have about 10 minutes remaining in this study session before we go into our seven o'clock regular council meeting. Any final comments, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I was just wondering if it'd be possible for the development to consider using San Bruno cable or even internet as they build. It'll consider preserve our job here in San Bruno, maybe even expanding as a pilot program, our cable network and our cable company.
Good morning, City Manager. Councilwoman Mason or Vice Mayor Mason? We will take that question back to the developer, embed it out internally in return with an answer.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Medina.
Yeah. Thank you for, my colleagues for their questions. I am intrigued by our vice mayor's thinking of having some of those parking spaces available to some of the community members. So that's interesting, and if that were to happen, I think that would be, it would be great because we all know that parking there is very difficult. And in fact, when I went down there today to the site, it was very difficult in the middle of the day to get parking. A couple easier questions that kind of like got triggered when, from my colleagues. Is there a project labor agreement for this project? I'm intrigued by the city net fiber access. That would be great that if something could be done there, again, with the vice mayor idea. On Slide 33, don't need to hear now, but what are the police traffic control measures? And overall, did the project go to the Traffic Safety Pedestrian Committee, who typically oversee these projects involving traffic and safety? For the design of the intersection with the additional traffic there, is the section currently going to be redesigned? The pavement section going to be redesigned to handle the additional road load and trap and vehicle load? I believe that street was paved maybe 10 years ago and it's in pretty poor condition as you're coming from on SNEE as you come up of El Camino. And then also wanted to, I'm concerned about the maintenance of the intersection and the improvements due to the additional vehicle load. I'm not really sure I yet understand that if there are 7,000 employees and if there's expecting a 45% reduction, does that mean that 3,850 vehicle trips are going to be generated from the site or for the project? And I think I heard that they're going to, they could work on that answer, but I wanted to just have a better understanding of it. As for the, Councilman Salazar mentioned about the traffic impact, it's going to be unique that we have a project that's across the street and I'm interested and encouraged that the developer will be having a community meeting with the contractor. Is that during the demolition phase, which if things get going, what is the project schedule? If you could help out with that? Will they be monitoring for noise, dust, vibration, parking restrictions for the contractors? One of the residents mentioned, you know, when you demo things, rats come out. And we've heard about that in San Bruno as well, that when you demo something, the rodents leave and now they're coming across the street. And then the two more things, for the public access to the amenity building, during the meeting, on the Zoom meeting I had with staff, there was some discussion about making that space available to the community. Would like to hear more details about that offer or agreement. And then finally, the current costing of the traffic improvements, I believe I heard they are based on concept design, concept. It's, they're not detailed cost estimates. So I want to make sure that we're clear with that. And as for, this will be my final question now, I apologize. The, we know our San Bruno city staff are extraordinarily busy and we have our own workload. Will this intersection be built and overseen by South San Francisco? We're issuing staff, or does our staff have to do the inspection? I'm just concerned that we already have enough on our plate and this is something else that our staff will have to do. And that means something will be possibly have to be removed from all the work that we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you. We have about three minutes. I don't know how much that can get covered or needs to be followed up with an email. Go ahead, Steph.
Mayor Medina, in response to Councilmember Medina's questions, while some of those we can answer now, I think, expect of time, we will provide an answer at the next meeting of the city council and incorporate a number of those in the staff report that you receive.
Okay, we appreciate that, and I'm sure that if somebody, council member finds another question or some other thought, they can certainly email it to you in preparation for that meeting as well. Councilwoman Medina.
Yeah, I wanted to request that the city have a larger area of residence for their input on project because it is not only just going to affect the people that live on Tanfran or the people that live north of Bay Shore, but the other 100, 100-plus residences that are in the area. I think, I think an additional community meeting led more by the city and with a more robust outreach in other languages because it's an extremely diverse community there. That although I do appreciate there was a Spanish translator at the meeting, but there are more than Spanish and English speakers that live in the community. So I wanted to make sure I added that so that it doesn't come as surprise later on. Thank you.
Okay, and like I said, other things can be forwarded to staff as well. Final comments, City?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. In response to Councilmember Medina's request for, and I'm going to restate it, an additional city-led community meeting before the encroachment agreement comes back to the city council led by the city. I just want to make sure that we get a majority of the city council concurrence on a staff undertaking that effort like we do with other individual council requests.
To the mayor?
Yeah, please.
Can we just get clarification on exactly what the question is? Because there's a lot that we just discussed.
Sure, the questions on the project or to the city or the developer, certainly the next time we're before the city council, we can provide an answer. I think in his last comments, Councilmember Medina expressed desire for the city to lead another community meeting. He didn't say the timing, but I'm assuming that is before, this is back before the city council. I believe what was articulated was to broadcast out to a wider audience. So I will interpret that as more than a 300-foot radius and to do it in multiple languages, not just English and Spanish. And I just want to be clear that individual council member requests, but if that's supported by the full city council, I, at this point, am unsure on timing, ability to execute, impact of the schedule, impact of the project or South City's approval, et cetera. I know that there was a number of developer meetings, city meeting, and additional public meetings scheduled and planned. And so I just want to be clear what the request from council is to staff.
Okay, thank you. I see, for any partners, Mr. Gilmore, you had a comment?
Yeah, I just thought I'd share the screen. Can everyone see this?
Yes.
So staff, please correct me if I'm wrong here, but the homes in blue were notified of the community meeting, of all community meetings.
Staff, is that correct? Are you aware that that's correct?
The in-person meeting was focused on these homes here, circled in red. But both 2020 and the May 2022 community meetings received, all the mailers were sent to all the homes in blue.
I believe that's correct, but we would have to get back and just make sure it's all those exact properties so we can respond at a later date.
Well, I appreciate everyone clarifying that or letting us know that. City manager asked a question, colleagues? Or Councilmember Medina, you want to clarify, but if we could do this quickly?
No, I, yes, thank you for that. What I believe I heard was that north of Bay Shore circle that were notified. So staff to determine what was actually, how were they, how our residents were notified. But I think getting 20 people out of 140 homes is on the very low side for a project of this scale. And that having a community meeting isn't that big of an ask. I understand, I didn't create the schedule, right? But I think that the input of our community is really important and we should, we should, we should make a better effort. And don't forget, it was still in the midst of COVID, right? And so there are people that didn't want, didn't want to go anywhere, right? So I'll leave it at that and hopefully I get the support from my colleagues.
Okay, let's, we need to.
Can I just add, can I just add that the second community meeting in May was a virtual meeting? So COVID was not a factor in that second, in that second meeting.
Right, and Marcus is correct. It went to north of 380 and over to San Mateo Avenue. So it was really that old fifth edition neighborhood, including the light industrial east of the railroad tracks that was invited to May meeting. That was virtual.
Right, and not all our residents have internet connectivity and a familiarity with Zoom, so there's also that as well.
Okay, so we're at 7:03, so did everybody understand the manager's question? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Gilmore, did I cut you off?
I'm good, thank you. I'm good.
And did every, colleagues, everybody understand the city manager's question? Anybody not understand the question that was asked with clarity from the Councilwoman Medina? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just one question before we go around is, were there other languages necessary at the in-person meeting that you attended?
For me, I was there for about half an hour. There was like five people there by the time I left, so it wasn't that.
For me, I was there about an hour and the answer is no to answer your question. Is there anybody else who wants to chime in before we, because we have our other meeting waiting?
I believe we had Spanish translators at both the in-person and the virtual meeting.
Thank you.
So, okay, does everybody understand the question? I'm going to go around very quickly. Vice Mayor Mason, just going to go how I see the boxes.
Yeah, I'm going to ask that we do a roll call vote the way we normally do, Mayor Medina.
Okay, this is a study session. It's just, do we want to request the, we're all going to be saying yes or no. So Marty, thank you, Councilwoman Medina, yes. Is there another yes or a no?
For my part, I generally support having more communication rather than less, but given the city manager's concerns and the timing, I would suggest that alternatively, we just communicate out the details of the project through the normal channels, including the city manager's newsletter and social media feeds and try to get word out that way and let people know that we will be discussing this at a regular council meeting.
Okay, so I would say no? Is that a fair assessment at this time? Okay. Anybody else, colleagues? Mr. Hamilton?
So I'm also going to be a no just because of the, because of the timing and I think, and I concur with Councilmember Salazar that we should just do everything that we can to make sure that everybody is aware that we'll be discussing this at the June 14 meeting and they'll have ample opportunity to give us their feedback.
Okay, before I chime in, is there anybody else that wants to make their voice no?
Yeah, I would just say yes, and I think if we were, if I was provided the flyers in advance, I'd be happy to go door-to-door and speak to those Spanish speakers to encourage more resident outreach. This is really a huge impact on the community and I too am concerned about the low turnout. But I appreciate the efforts. I think, I'm not minimizing the efforts that were put out, but maybe bilingual door-to-door will get more turnout. Thank you.
My opinion, I'm going to join Councilmember. My opinion, I'm going to join Councilmembers Alar and Hamilton. I think that we can make those efforts for the upcoming public meeting that will be held during a regular City Council time. So does City Hall need anything else before we go into our seven o'clock, which we're a little tardy for?
No, thank you, Mayor and Council. We have cleared the rest.
All right, folks, we adjourned the study session. I will see you momentarily at City Council meeting and I'll wait for everybody to be online. Let's see, we're all here. Okay. And I'm sorry, I should ask, Staff, are we okay now?
Yes, Mayor, we are.
Thank you kindly. Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council meeting of May the 24th, 2022. Calling the meeting to order at 7:10. I do apologize for our tardiness. We had a study session that concluded a little behind schedule. At this time, I'd ask for roll call.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Here.
Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mason?
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Here.
Thank you. Everyone is here. If you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, next we will move on to item three, I'm sorry, item four, public comments for items not on the agenda. Individuals will be allowed up to three minutes. It is council policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak at this time on items not on the agenda? If you could, if you could, please raise your virtual hand.
I do not currently see any hands up.
Thank you kindly. We will move on to item number five. We have our first item A, and I am going to turn it over to Director Anne Matola, please.
Good evening, Mayor Medina and Councilmembers. So I'm just here to give a reminder to the community that we have a full day of celebration planned on Sunday, June 5th, starting off with the San Bruno Lions Posey Parade. That begins at 11 o'clock AM on San Mateo Avenue at Kane's. And then the parade will be followed by Community Day from noon to 5:00 along San Mateo Avenue. There'll be so many activities there. We really don't want you to miss anything. We have global cuisine from our outstanding restaurant community, a Kid Zone and a Toucha Truck, two stages of diverse music and cultural performers, art activities and art vendors, and community group exhibits. So we hope to see you all there. Thank you.
My mute wouldn't go off. Thank you very much, Director. Next, we will go ahead and go to item B, and I'll call upon Lupita, please.
I apologize for the delay. On Saturday, May 28, 2022, beginning at 8:00 AM, Recology will host the 2022 compost giveaway at San Bruno City Park, parking off of Santa Lucia Avenue, also known as the former pool parking lot. This event will be a self-serve event. Please bring your own bucket and limited to five gallons per household. For more information, please contact Recology San Bruno at 650-583-8536.
Thank you very much. And the last one they held was in August of last year, so they've done it every year. And was in a different location that didn't get a lot of, as much participation. So they've changed it to go ahead and try a different location, as you see it here. Next, we will move on to item C, and I'll turn that over to Director Pamela Wu, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am very pleased to announce two exciting items. The first one is the next second virtual community meeting relating to the Housing Element Update, which will take place on May 26, 2022, virtually from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. You can join the workshop by following the link. Also, we're pleased to announce the public draft of the Housing Element Update. That's also available at sanbruno.ca.gov/housingelementupdate. And later on this evening, we will provide you an update to the content of this draft document. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. And now we will move on to item D. Can stop sharing the screen? I like it. First, we want to announce, we already had been announced that Mr. Zaffrono is retiring, but the City Council wishes to thank our, our City Attorney, Mark Zaffrono, for serving the San Bruno community from 2011 to 2022. And if memory is correct, it began in February of 2011. And those recall what happened in September of 2010. So Mr. Zaffrono came in at a very, shall we say, unique and challenging time to San Bruno and has been there with us ever since through many challenging times, but also rewarding times. And so I, the City Council, wish very much to offer our thanks, appreciation, and best wishes in retirement to you and your family and all your future endeavors. I'd like to see if Mr. Zaffrono, our City Attorney, has any comments.
Thank you so much. Just thanks for the incredible opportunity to represent the city for these 11 years. It's really been an honor and a privilege. And also many thanks to a wonderful staff and two city managers working together as a team to accomplish really an incredible variety of both projects and strategic initiatives for the benefit of the community. So thank you again for everything. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Zaffrono as well. I knew it would be to the point, as you have always tried to keep, keep it to that. I'm sorry, is there a hand up at City Hall?
Yes, Mayor, really briefly, I would just like to, on behalf of all six staff and the department head team in particular that has worked very closely with City Attorney Zaffrono, just thank him for being a consummate professional. His partnership and friendship is greatly appreciated. And wish you well in retirement and your service to San Bruno, I know is something you can be proud of for every day you're on the golf course. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I hope it'll be the tennis court instead, but otherwise that's great.
Or the tennis court, yes.
Much appreciated.
Thank you again, Mark, very much for everything. Item E, Issue Proclamation to Declare May 2022 is Jewish American Heritage Month for the City of San Bruno, a proclamation before me, and I will read some of the whereas's. Whereas in recent years, Jewish Americans have increasingly experienced antisemitism, including but not limited to physical attacks, vandalism, verbal and physical harassment, and hateful comments posted on social media. And whereas, San Bruno shares an obligation to condemn and combat antisemitism, sorry, whenever it exists to include Jewish American in all facets of civic life. And to stand with the Jewish American community against hatred or bigotry in our community and country. And whereas, there is a need for education and policies that are culturally competent when describing, discussing, or addressing the impacts of being Jewish in all aspects of American society, including discourse and policy. And whereas, we celebrate the rich and diverse heritage of the Jewish American community, including those who live, work, and play in San Bruno. And now there, or have it, may it be resolved that I Rico I Medina, Mayor of the City of San Bruno, declare the month of May as Jewish American Heritage Month in appreciation of the achievements and contributions made by members of the Jewish community. San Bruno calls upon all residents to celebrate Jewish Americans who have woven the fabric of our country and community and supports opportunities to learn more about the Jewish American history and culture. So I appreciate that and thank you for the slide from Staff. And if we could move on to our next item, which is F. And that is Issue Proclamation to Declare June 2022 as Pride Month for the City of San Bruno. And I will read some of the whereas's. Whereas, the City of San Bruno is committed to supporting visibly dignity and equity for LGBTQ people in our diverse community. And whereas, while society and large increasingly supports LGBTQ equality, it is essential to acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination and prejudice. And whereas, this nation was founded on the principle that every individual has the infinite dignity and worth. And that the City of San Bruno calls upon the people of this municipality to embrace this principle and work to eliminate the prejudice wherever it exists. And whereas, celebrating Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for the San Mateo County's LGBT community. And it is an opportunity to take action and engage in dialogue to strengthen allegiance, build excellence, and advance equal rights. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that I Rico I Medina, Mayor of the City of San Bruno, hereby proclaim the month of June 2022 as Pride Month in support of the LGBT community. And there is on the agenda, under consent, a resolution, as is our practice and policy, for the council to take action to raise the flag for the month. Thank you for that. We will move on to item G. San Mateo County Anonymous Gun Buyback will be held on June 4th, 2022, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at 10:50. That's 1050 Mission Road in South San Francisco. It's being held in South San Francisco, but San Bruno, our police department in San Bruno is also participating and involved with this as well. And finally, I know it's not on there, but I did want to acknowledge that on Memorial Day, there will be a live and in-person celebration to pay respects and honor to all of those at the, if we could stop sharing the screen, please, at the San Bruno Golden Gate National Cemetery. Again, it will be occurring. They expect a large turnout, and that is on Memorial Day at 11:00 AM at the San Bruno Golden Gate Cemetery. With that, that is the end for announcements and presentations, and we will move on to consent. All items are considered routine or implemented in earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. We have items A through I. Are there any items we want to pull for a separate vote? Seeing no separate vote, are there any items to add, comment, or ask a question? Councilmember Medina?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item F, as in Frank.
Thank you. Councilmember Hamilton?
I also wanted to pull F, so I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands, let's go to F's and Frank. Adopt Resolution Accepting the Avenue's 1-3 Sewer and Water Main Replacement Project as Complete, Authorizing the Filing of the Notice of Completion with the San Mateo County Recorder's Office and Authorizing Release of the Construction Contract Retention in the Amount of, let's see, what is it? Is it 300? No. Is that what I'm thinking? 301-874.95, sorry. And as I'm going to turn this over to Staff, or I'm sorry, let's, I'm going to first turn it over to Councilman Medina, and then Councilmember Hamilton, and then to Staff, if need be. Mr. Medina?
You know, let's go ahead and let Mr. Hamilton speak, since I spoke so much at the last meeting. And I, I would like to hear what he has to say, so if you don't mind, Mr. Hamilton.
Very kind of you, Mr. Medina. Nobody, nobody was counting. Mr. Hamilton?
Thank you, Councilmember Medina. I just wanted to make just a brief comment to recognize the completion of this large and very important project and to, to thank the, the city team, everyone involved, for bringing the project in, bringing it to a close, $694,200 under, under budget. That's, you know, a major portion of that's going to go back to the Stormwater Fund, which is in sorely in need of, of funding. So it's, it's very much appreciated, and I just wanted to take a moment to recognize that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Medina?
Yes, I, I pulled it for the same, pretty much the same reason also, to highlight the efforts that we're, that we're going through with our staff to upgrade our water and sewer systems. And also to acknowledge that when, when we did this, these projects, that we are putting curb ramps in, required to, when anytime we are paving the streets. And there are many residents are happier with their newly paved streets that go hand in hand with when you replace water and you replace sewer. So just wanted to thank Staff for that and acknowledge that we are replacing our infrastructure. And I, and the second, the second part is, I do, do want to apologize to Staff for sending the email on Sunday regarding a couple intersections that had some landscaping issues with curb ramps. And, and I just wanted to make sure that if Staff had the ability to look at them yet, but making sure that there is some restoration to the original condition, at least some improvement in what is being left now. Lastly, Mr. Mayor, I apologize, but I do want to commend the contractor. I, I observed a large improvement in, in the workmanship and notification procedures and the general just kindness and, and awareness of the contractor while they're working on the street. So thank you, thank you for that.
Thank you. And Mr. Hamilton, I'm sorry, that handle was-
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I put it back up because I realized I just spoke and I, I indicated that a good portion of that money was going back to the Stormwater Fund when it's going back to the wastewater fund. So I just wanted to correct myself. Sorry about that.
No worries. Thank you. Okay, seeing no other hands up from colleagues and nothing else on the consent, let's open it up to see if there's any members of the public that would just be on consent.
I do not see any hands up.
Thank you. So from Council, please.
Mr. Mayor? Excuse me. Well, did, did Staff hear your question? And I, I sent an email on Sunday. I apologize, but that's when I sent it. I was wondering if they- I was wondering if they were able to or will be going to look at the intersections I referenced, because when we accept closure, it's, it's done. We were accepting this project as complete, so just wanted to see if, if there was some movement on that.
Uh, city hall?
Councilmember Medina, uh, we do not have a response, uh, at this time on those intersections in there. Uh, will the contractor be able to restore it, or is it something staff can do? Uh, we just, uh, honestly haven't had time to fully investigate it.
And it's not that much more work, honestly. It's just one of the things that I noticed in, in, in the neighborhood, at, at least two of the intersections, so, um, it won't be too costly, but understanding the, the time crunch and, um, if staff can look into it and, and fix it at some point, that would be, um, I think the right thing to do. So, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to support this with that statement.
Thank you, Mr. Medina. Okay, let's, uh, action from council, please. I know it's, action from council on consent?
Through the chair, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Full second.
We have a motion and second, Salazar, Hamilton, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mason?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye.
Motion passes five oh. Next, we will move on to item seven, Conductive Business. Item, item A, please.
Waive first reading and introduce an ordinance amending chapter ten point sixteen, water conservation on the San Bruno Municipal Code.
At this time, I'd like to turn it over to the Public Works Director, Mr. Lee.
Good evening, Mayor Medina and members of council. My name is Matt Lee, I'm the Public Works Director. I'll be doing this presentation tonight on water conservation with Rodora Buget EFM, Wes Yost. And, uh, Rodora, if you can start the PowerPoint slide presentation. Uh, Rodora will start first, uh, and, and explain the water conservation regulation changes, and I will follow up at the end with, um, actions that we've done to date for water conservation, and we'll open up to any questions and comments that you may have. Rodora, take it away.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Rodora.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Medina and City Council members. Tonight, I will be bringing to you, um, the, a proposed update to the city's water conservation chapter. Under this agenda item, City Council is asked to consider revisions to the San Bruno Municipal Code, ten sixteen, Water Conservation Chapter. In this presentation, we will provide background and context for the revisions, um, specifically relative to the city's water shortage contingency plan, why this chapter needs to be modified, and we'll be discussing proposed changes to the municipal code and current city conservation efforts. A little bit of background. Um, Governor Newsom proclaimed state of emergency due to drought in San Mateo County in July twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, and declared statewide drought emergency in October twenty twenty-one. San Bruno has been under Level One Water Conservation since twenty sixteen in response to the drought at that time, and to conform with the state's two thousand and nine water conservation regulation. The city has done amazingly well and has exceeded its, its target of a hundred twenty-four gallons per capita per day. Actual twenty twenty water use was sixty-nine gallons per capita per day. The West Yost team has prepared twenty urban water management plans this past year, and the city has some of the lowest water use per capita compared with other committees, and so, um, I want to commend the city for exceeding that goal. Unfortunately, drought conditions have worsened, and the State Water Board today adopted emergency regulations, uh, associated with the drought. This includes Level Two mandatory conservation, and I'll be explaining that shortly. So the cities, uh, the city is well-prepared for responding to this, uh, recent reg- regulation. The city's water shortage contingency plan was adopted in October twenty twenty-one. The plan prepares for responses to water shortages, both foreseeable and unforeseeable, and incorporated the state's twenty eighteen water conservation legislation. This standardizes the water shortage conditions as shown in the chart to the right, where water shortage Level One is associated with shortage conditions up to ten percent, two for shortage conditions up to twenty percent, all the way to Level Six, where there's a water shortage condition greater than fifty percent. The Water Shortage Contingency Plan provides city actions during water shortage emergencies organized by these shortage levels. The actions include demand reduction, supply augmentation, and operational changes. When the city's water shortage contingency plan was being prepared, staff realized that there's a need to change the city's water conservation chapter to align the San Bruno Municipal Code with state requirements, provide support to implement water shortage contingency plan during water shortage emergencies, and to support water conservation efforts. So why modify the water conservation chapter? First, the water conservation regulations under normal conditions, um, are not in place in the current chapter. Second, water shortage emergency provisions need to be consistent with the adopted water shortage contingency plan and state requirements. And third, the city ne- needs to better define authority and responsibility. The proposed provisions include organizing the chapter and consolidating enforcement and penalties. It includes addition of water conservation regulations under normal conditions, update to water shortage emergency provisions, and defining authority and responsibility. The chapter was reorganized to address additions, and no changes were made to enforcement and penalties, but they were consolidated under one session for consistency. The proposed revisions add water conservation regulations under normal conditions. As stated earlier, the current chapter is silent. The proposed revision prohibits wasteful water use and provides for consistency with state water conservation restrictions, prohibitions, or regulations. Examples of prohibitions include prohibiting watering outdoor landscapes that cause runoff and prohibiting hosing off land, hardscapes, except for health and, and safety needs. The proposed revisions also include update to the water shortage emergency provisions. The city council would conduct public hearing to determine water shortage emergency condition and authorize implementation of water shortage emergency regulations consistent with California Water Code, section three fifty. It also includes, uh, the recently adopted water shortage stages as shown in the table, um, in an earlier slide, consistent with state standards and city's water shortage contingency plan, and incorporates water use regulations consistent with the plan. The provisions also define authority and responsibility. The Water Shortage Contingency Plan addresses both foreseeable and unforeseeable events. The city has the overall responsibility for declaring water shortage emergency, and that is maintained in the proposed updates. However, convening city council could take time, which is not practical in unforeseeable events, such as earthquakes or infrastructure failure. The municipal code is silent on authority until city council can convene. The city, um, the authority is provided to city manager to declare water shortage emergency for imminent events, and city council would convene and ratify the water shortage emergency as soon as possible. Lastly, the municipal code refers to enforcement and penalties appeals to an appeals board, but the city does not have an appeals board established. The proposed revision authorizes the Director of Public Works to consider appeals to enfor- enforcement and penalties, and appeals could go up to the city manager for final decision. The update to the city's code is timely, as today the State Water Resources Control Board adopted emergency water conservation regulations for current drought event. This updated water conservation chapter would align the San Bruno Municipal Code with state requirements, support implementation of the city's water shortage contingency plan, and support water conservation efforts. I will now turn the presentation over to Public Works Director, Matt Lee, who will talk about current city conservation efforts. Matt?
Thanks, Rodora. Um, next slide, please. So, uh, in terms of conservation efforts that we've already done to date, um, you know, at, the city is already, like Rodora said, at the Level One Conservation, voluntary conservation level, and, and one of the things that we do with conservation is we really focus on the demand component of it. And so there are rebate programs that we participate in, uh, at, at the city through various agencies, which is the Lawn Be Gone program that, uh, allows you to convert your lawn into a more drought-resistant landscape. Um, there's the Rain Barrel rebate program, which collects stormwater runoff, uh, from your, uh, property and collects it in a barrel that can be used for not-for-profit water purposes. And then we also have, uh, the low-flow toilet replacement rebates. In addition to that, there's just giveaways, just so we can reduce the, uh, usage of water by providing low flow, low flow assets and accessories, such as faucet aerators, showerheads, shower timers. And for those who choose not to, uh, participate in the rebate, you can have toilet tank bags to reduce the amount of water for toilets, flushes, and hose nozzles. Next slide, please. In addition to the demand side, um, like Rodora said, our community has been doing a really great job in conserving water, and so we continue that with outreach, uh, programs. Uh, one of the one programs are education programs for school-aged children called Eartha Pigs. We, uh, periodically send utility inserts. Uh, we've been in the process of, uh, putting banners throughout the city, as you see in, in the image in the lower left-hand corner. And we've recently updated our website, um, to provide new information for water conservation, and obviously with the new mandate today from the state, we will be working with our partners and stakeholders to update the website and, uh, add any additional resources and information that are needed. Uh, next slide, please. And so, uh, how we do that is we actually monitor, uh, water production and demand changes. Um, we use that information to determine the intensity of our outreach and adjust our water supply whenever necessary. And, uh, when, when necessary and available, we can enact enforcement actions based on, uh, water usage, uh, depending on what level we're assigned at. Next, please, next slide, please. And so that's the presentation we have for the water conservation changes. Um, uh, just in a nutshell, the, the amendments to the municipal code right now helps make it more explicit for, uh, city council in terms of the actions that we'll be taking, uh, for the various levels, once it's, uh, declared and decreed. Um, I am here with Rodora, with Wes Yost, and staff members, uh, the acting water system and conservation manager, Steve Salazar, to answer any questions right now.
Thank you very much for the report. If we could stop sharing the screen when you have a sec? Thank you kindly. Um, questions from council members, um, in regards to the presentation? Seeing none at this time, let's, uh, turn to the community, see if there are any folks that wish to speak or ask questions on, on this topic.
I do not see any hands raised at the moment.
Thank you very much. I'll bring it back to council for any comments and our action. Uh, Councilmember Hamilton?
I, I have just, um, a couple of comments. Uh, there's, there's a lot of very important changes that are being made to the, to the, to the new code here. Um, all of them, uh, very important and needed. Um, one of the most important ones, and the, the one area of the, of the current code that I, um, dislike or that has become outdated, is that we currently, um, re- are required to declare a water emergency before we can enact any conservation measures. And with the ongoing effects of climate change and repeated years of below-average rainfall, um, we're at the point where we need to make conservation our business as usual. And having that restriction in there is, 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 is silly. Um, and, uh, so, you know, I, I want us to be, I want us to be at a point where conservation is the, is the norm, and, um, for, for that reason, uh, and for many other reasons, I'm in favor of the, of these changes. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Any other comments? Seeing none, again, if council wishes to proceed, this is a, um, if we need to waive the first reading? I'm sorry, Vice Mayor?
I'm sorry, I didn't get the raise hands fast enough. Um, I just wanted to ask if, um, the, I saw the city efforts, I thought that was right, that it was, that, that the city's efforts were highlighted. I did wanna ask whether there's been any communication with the school district, because they own so much land, uh, a lot of green grass. I'm curious just to know if that, that has played a role in this conversation at all.
Yes, uh, that's a great question, Vice Mayor Mason. So, uh, we've recently been approached by the City of Millbrae to, uh, look at total, a non-provable water usage for recycled water. And so there's a feasibility study that it's, uh, it's almost underway to get it done. And so they, they wanted to partner with us to see if we had any opportunities within our city. And so we were looking at our, uh, parks, uh, parks and facilities because of the amount of water usage there. And so in our conversation with them, we were able to, uh, understand what they were doing. And so we, uh, actually reached out to the school district, I believe, just last week, uh, to see if they would like to participate in this effort as well. Um, uh, I, I do have a, a follow-up meeting with the City of Millbrae to discuss this. And so I think, I think, uh, you know, to answer your question, conservation is, is always on the top of our mind. We actually do have a conservation manager that kind of so- solely focuses on this, and I think that's why our, um, metrics are, that show a lot of conservation and why they're so low. We have been in a voluntary Level One, uh, effort, uh, since two thousand and sixteen. Uh, you know, usually when water conservation is required, uh, certain water agencies see a reduction in water usage, but it spikes back up uh, once the conservation goes away. But we've actually been steadily staying flat or declining. And so I think that's, that's, that has a lot to do with the community and the outreach that we're currently doing. Um, and so that's where we stand with water conservation. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? I, I mean, I see a hand, uh, Stephen Salazar?
I wanted to add, as the drought conditions continue, the San Bruno Water Division is prepared to meet customers' needs by ensuring reliable water supply to our community without loss of water quality. And I also wanted to add, our community has done a tremendous job with their conservation efforts when needed, and we look forward to partnering with them as we continue to face the drought. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, uh, questions or comments? Uh, any action from council? We would, uh, is a first reading that would need to be waived, if so?
Through the mayor?
Yes, please.
I'd like to make a motion that we waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance amending chapter ten point one six, Water Conservation of the San Bruno Municipal Code.
Water Conservation of the San Bruno Municipal Code.
We'll have, if, else I'm incorrect. We'll have to take in two actions. First, we need to waive the, the first reading. And then we will go ahead and do.
And then I will, I'll amend my motion to say, I make a motion to waive the first reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, we'll, we'll switch over to Hamilton Medina. Motion second to waive first reading. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mason?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye. That passes at 5:00, and now there is the introduction of the ordinance.
Through the mayor?
Please.
I will make a motion to introduce an ordinance amending chapter 10.16 Water Conservation of the San Bruno Municipal Code.
There's a motion. Is there a second? I guess I get the second. Thanks, Marty. Hamilton Salazar, motion second regarding amending the ordinance. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mason?
Mayor Rico Medina?
That is passed, 5:00. Thank you very much to staff and the presentation. Next, we'll move on to item B. Study session for, uh, see, study session for the release of the draft of the 2023 to 2031 housing element. And we'll turn that over to the director, Pamela Wu, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, honorable mayor and members of the city council. My name is Pamela Wu. I'm city's community and economic development director. There we go. Thank you. With me tonight is the, is the planning and housing manager, Michael Loughlin, and senior planner, Michael Smith. We're very pleased to announce the public release of the city's draft housing element. Next slide, please. Tonight's objective is to announce the release of the city's draft document. We'll walk you through how we arrived at the relevant section of the draft document, including arena allocation, housing inventory site that city council has studied in the January study session, how staff has developed these policies and goals. And also we'll conclude the presentation tonight with an overall adoption schedule. We'll also leave room for questions for council. With that said, I'm going to turn the presentation to Michael Smith, senior planner, for the rest of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Pamela. Good evening, Mayor Medina and members of city council. My name is Michael Smith, and I'm the city's senior planner. The intent of this study session is to, or this presentation is to present the draft housing element and highlight progress that has been made since the January study session. Before we send our draft over to HCD for their 90 day review period, they require a public meeting for the release of the draft document and a 30 day public review period. This, this meeting fulfills that requirement. Once HCD's comments are received, an updated draft will be prepared, made available to decision makers and the public this fall. All public comments received will be attached to that document and the document that we forward to HCD at the end of this 30 day public review period. So the draft document can be found on the city's website. The public review period for the draft document will be available through June 24th. It started today, May 24th. During this period, decision makers, interested agencies, housing organizations, and the public can review the document and provide comments. Comments can be sent to me, Michael Smith, at msmith@sanbruno.ca.gov. These comments will be reviewed and where appropriate, incorporated into the draft housing element. The revised document will then be forwarded to HCD for review and comments. So over the past year, the city of San Bruno, its residents and stakeholders from across region have participated in outreach and engagement efforts for the housing element update. And it is with excitement that the city of San Bruno released the draft today. The draft housing element establishes goals, policies, and programs to help address the city's current and future housing needs and includes a list of recommended housing sites. It is the city's blueprint for housing related decisions and sets an action plan for how to meet housing goals over the next eight year cycle. The release of the draft housing element begins a 30 day public comment review period in preparation for transmittal to HCD for their required initial review. The final housing element will, is anticipated to be reviewed by the city council at the end of 2022. Please visit the website. It's a 2023 to 2031 Housing Element Update slash San Bruno. It's the webpage where the, where we've currently put the housing element to review the draft. A paper copy can also be made available, or, excuse me, we have paper copies also at the Community and Economic Development Counter in City Hall. And we're also, we'll have a copy at the San Bruno Public Library at 701 Angus Avenue. So we invite you to review the draft housing element and provide feedback before the end of the public review period, which is again Friday, June 24th. So a little bit about the housing element. It consists of extensive analysis on housing needs, constraints to housing production, fair housing assessment, housing resources, public engagement, and previous accomplishments, as well as proposed housing sites, goals, policies, and programs. The draft housing element and technical background reports, which are in the appendices, are available on the housing element webpage attached to the document. For tonight, I wanted to focus on two sections of the draft housing element. The first one is the site inventory list. And this is kind of based upon the input that we got from you in January, which required, which you, your preference for the 15% buffer. And then also folk, we'll go into a little bit of the proposed goals and programs for the housing element. So a key component of the draft housing element includes identification of potentially or potential housing sites that can feasibly be developed to satisfy the city's arena allocation of 3,165 units. The buffer, as directed by city council, is 15%, which brings our total up to 3,640 units. The proposed sites inventory has been updated based on city council's correction at the January study session. And so here you are, you can see how that 15% is added by all the different income categories. And so that brings us to our total, grand total of 3,640. And so this is what staff has put together in the housing element to show how the city can go about meeting that arena goal of 3,640 units. And we've actually found a few extra. And they're divided into these different buckets that you can see here in this table. So first, we have the pipeline projects. And we're estimating 670 units. We have TCP and other sites at 1,293 units. We have Tanfran at, at 1,000 units. Accessory dwelling units or ADUs at 345. And we've identified 415 units in the Bay Hill specific plan. And that brings us up again to our total of 3,723, which is above the 15% buffer that, that you requested. And it should be noted that these numbers will change as we go through the HCD review process. So first, we're going to start off with the pipeline project. Staff has evaluated pipeline projects that could count towards the sixth cycle for Rena. For purposes of identifying pipeline projects, staff not only considered the anticipated status of the project as of June 30th, 2022. And that, that date is important because that's the date by which if a product has received a certificate of occupancy by that date, then it counts towards our current Rena cycle. So this, and so that would be, that would be, those projects that fall into that category, I think there's only one, and that is what the project, the multifamily project being constructed at Skyline College. So based upon what we have right now, some of these projects you'll recognize. They're projects that have maybe come for you, come to you for review or otherwise been reviewed by the planning commission. And so in this bucket, we've identified 670 units. And these projects will not get their certificate of occupancy before June 30th. So we are considering these pipeline projects. And so that's where the 670 comes on in that previous table. This map is an enlargement of portion of the sites inventory map that's in the housing element and shows the location of the sites relative to the census boundaries in the city. The blue lines represent the boundaries for the different census tracts. It describes how the housing units will be distributed citywide. As you can see, most of the housing is concentrated in and around the TCP. And that's defined by the, the magento or purple boundaries on the map. So staff really had to analyze sites within the TCP and determine that there is significant housing development potential along its corridors, which are, are likely to develop within the next Rena cycle. The estimated housing densities for sites is based on numerous conversations with developers and the density of projects that have already been entitled and proposed within the TCP. Therefore, staff believes that the densities represent a realistic development potential for the sites. There are a number of sites in the inventory that are located outside the TCP. And that's, you can see these a little bit further afield, like site number six over here. That's the Engvall Middle School site. And then we also have these ones out here in the, in the Bay Hill. And then, of course, the Tanfran site at number 14. So, so there are some sites outside of the TCP. A limited number of rezonings will be required. So far, staff has identified that the Tanfran site will need to be rezoned to accommodate the 1,000 housing units that we're anticipating for that site. And we anticipate starting a master planning process, hopefully sometime in 2022. So the Tanfran is the largest site that we've identified with the most Rena units. Again, it's 1,000 units, which is 41% of our overall site inventory. And that is all located in Census Track 6041.02. When you include the other three sites located in the Census Track, so you can kind of see that right here, this Census Track will actually account for 72% of San Bruno's overall Rena inventory. And those, that 72% includes Tanfran, Bay Hill Shopping Center, and the Traeger Office Building at 801 to 851 Traeger and the AT&amp;T vacant office building. And that's a total of 1,735 units. And then just simply going over some of these other sites here, you'll recognize, I'll, I'll read off a few, but I don't need to read off all 23. But some of the sites you're familiar with is the ones just south of City Hall, the former Mike's Auto Property. We identified a few banks that have large parking lots in the downtown that could be developed with housing. And then, of course, the car dealerships along El Camino Real associated with the former Melody Toyota. And the, I think it's the Ford site, a former Ford site across the street for auto dealership. So HCD allows each jurisdiction to include ADUs as part of its overall Rena obligation based on the average number of building permits the jurisdiction issued for ADUs of the previous three years, and that's 2019 to 2021, as, as specified in its annual progress report. San Bruno issued building permits for 68 ADUs in 2021. And projecting forward, staff estimates ADU construction to be more in line with the number of applications the city received in 2020 and 2021, and is including an ADU estimate of 345 units over the eight year planning period, which is approximately 43 units per year. So the Bay Hill specific plan, which was adopted by the city in October of 2021, included two housing overlay designations in appropriate locations in which landowners have the option of developing housing. These designations allow up to 573 dwelling units. So staff took a look at the plan and evaluated the overlay zones in conjunction with input from property owners and has determined housing is most likely to be constructed on the, at the Bay Hill Shopping Center site at 851 Cherry and at the office buildings located at 801 to 851 Traeger Avenue. These two sites are zoned for a maximum of 415 dwelling units. Now, we're going to take a look a little, a little bit at how we developed our goals and policies that you'll find in the housing element. So we're just providing a small snapshot of some of the analysis that formed the basis of our recommended goals and programs. In the draft housing element, you will find a lot more analysis covering housing topics such as demographics, housing needs, constraints to housing, and housing resources. Inputs to goals and programs included existing goals and programs. So we took a look at those and we called those ones that were still relevant. And we're going to carry those forward into the, the next housing element, or we're recommending. We also assessed housing needs here in the city. So there's a whole section in the document that talks about really what's happening in San Bruno on a housing level. And then we have affirmatively furthering fair housing. This is a new requirement. And this really looks at kind of the city affirmatively correcting situations regarding housing that have existed for, for many years where different races are becoming isolated in communities. And then lastly, we look at public outreach and did a lot of public outreach, and then we did some surveys. So these are some of our broader housing goals that we looked at. As I said, the housing element is required to include goals and programs and policies to be implemented over the eight year plan period. And these policies need to encourage the development of housing and improve access to housing units. Based on public feedback and the background data analysis that I talked about earlier, staff developed these eight overarching goals presented on the slide. The complete list of draft programs associated with these goals is attached to the staff report. And so I'll just read these quickly. Goal number one is to improve the development review and approval process to reduce processing times and simplify administration. Goal number two, increase the availability of housing throughout the city. Goal number three, protect current residents from displacement. Goal number four, support the needs of households with low incomes and special needs. Goal number five, improve the city's management of its affordable housing portfolio and housing funds. Goal number six, preserve the affordability of existing at risk affordable housing. And goal number seven, promote sustainable residential development that is energy efficient and reduces greenhouse gas emissions. And goal number eight is to promote equity in housing. And so again, these are just the broader goals. And there's a whole list of programs associated with each one of these goals in the draft housing element. So a little about the outreach, the public outreach process. To get the public involved in the process over the last year and a half, staff met with fair housing advocates, service providers, and housing developers, hosted an introductory housing element meeting, an AU workshop through public outreach conducted with 21 elements. In addition, staff held two community meetings, launched a community meeting survey, which were promoted through the city's social media, announced on Channel One, inserted into utility bills, included in the city manager's newsletter, and distributed to downtown businesses. Also, in partnership with 21 elements, a fair housing survey was also distributed to residents. Feedback obtained from all of these outreach efforts has been incorporated into the housing element and draft policies. Our final public workshop will be held on May 26th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. You can find links on the Housing Element Update website for that meeting. The public will be given further opportunity at this meeting to comment on the document based on the draft policies that we put together so far. And then the public will also be given a opportunity And then the public will also be given an opportunity to comment on the document in the fall when the document goes through the formal adoption process. And again, all comments received will be included in the appendices and forwarded to HCD with the document for review. And so now just touch on the schedule. As I said, you know, we're gonna take this, this will be back before you in the fall. So I'm just show you through the schedule of how we're gonna get there. So this is the schedule for the housing element through certification. So right now, we're in the thirty-day public review period, which is May fourth through June twenty-fourth. Sorry, well, this council study session is a meeting that we're having today. We're looking at submitting the draft to HCD in early July, and then they have a ninety-day review period. We'll be revising the document in response to our comments in September on, in October. And we'll publish the public hearing draft in the first round of HCD Comments Incorporated in probably late October, but September, October. Circulate the SEQA document associated with this, and that will also happen in the September, October period. And then we'll have hearings for adoption in October and December. And we're looking to submit the adopted document to HCD in December and have it certified by the end of January. And January thirty-first of 2023 is the drop dead deadline. So any questions? This concludes my presentation. Is there any questions?
Thank you much for everyone's presentation and comments. And I'll turn it over to Vice Mayor Mason.
Thank you, everyone. I know how much work's been put into this, so we really appreciate the dedication. I just wanted to ask at the last meeting I'd asked about the brackets, the very low income, the low income. Could we get the ranges of what those income levels are so that we can just, I'd like to know for Samatyo County, but I think it'd be good for the public to understand what those brackets are as well.
Sir Vice Mayor, Michael, can you bring that slide, the RENA allocation of the fifteen percent?
Well, are you asking for the AMI, area median income? Yeah, okay. So that's, I don't have that in this slideshow. I do know that it's roughly about a hundred and forty-nine thousand for a family of four in Samatyo County. And then that's kind of like the median, and then it kind of goes down and up from there. I can forward that to you, but it's also in the housing, the draft housing element as well.
That'd be great if it's included in the next public presentation, just so that the public is aware, because I think there is often misnomers about what affordable housing is. And it's quite shocking what the minimum is for some of these units to just qualify to get into them. But other than that, I'm really glad to see the allocations towards the very low and low income. And hopefully, we have some developers come to the table to meet us on those needs. Thank you.
City Hall, please.
Sure. To the mayor, just for clarification, I believe what the vice mayor is asking for is both the AMI and the area median income, but then also what a very low, low, and moderate unit may sell and rent for. And so I think we can provide a full complement of that information to the full council.
Great. And so you manage, not just some sell for, but if it's rentals, imagine a number of these will be, what is the minimum qualification for eligibility?
Absolutely. So really, three data points for every income level, area median income, what a affordable unit will rent for and what an affordable unit will sell for. Thank you.
Are there questions from colleagues? Councilor Medina.
More of, thanks for the effort. We all know and have heard all across the region of the housing needs and what we're doing to try to, try to meet the required allocations. I appreciate that staff was able to add in that buffer of that fifteen percent. Do we have an idea which HCD is gonna be? Does staff have contacted them, with them now to get an idea? Are they expecting a larger number? Or it's pretty much you wait until you turn it in that you get any feedback? That's my first question. And then understandably, Tanfran will be going through a master plan process to take property that isn't zoned to become zoned potentially for housing. For other areas, being nearby town center and the warehouses along Sneeve, just wanted to hear staff kind of go through the process that each of those areas would have to kind of go through the same thing of their own master plan. Is that how typically it works?
Yes, Councilmember Medina, I'll take a crack at answering your first question. So staff has been in close contact with HCD. If I were to guess, I, we would not know what their feedback is until we send the revised copy. But we met the number, and we also applied a fifteen percent buffer. If I were to give it a bet, I think we're pretty good. And then the second question that you've asked is in regard to the nearby area adjacent to Tanfran. So as of now, the town center does not allow for any residential use. And staff working collaboratively with other consultants have not taken into account to account for any residential units within those areas. So they're not included on the inventory list. And to answer your question, yes, it would require some sort of a general plan amendment and also zoning update to change the underlying zoning to allow housing, leave alone to also to comply with the ALUC and also SFO guidelines. And so that would include most of the town center. The industrial warehousing area is currently zoned industrial, where housing is also not allowed.
Got it. So it's a little more elaborate process that we keep going through. And just want to make sure that was clear and that we had like a backup plan of where we, where would we put the house? Because we do have difficulty with our geography and being that we don't have too much space available.
Understood.
Thank you.
Are there questions this time from colleagues? If not, let's move to the public. For any folks and members of the community that would like to ask questions or have comments, now would be the time for you to raise your hand. Peter will bring you into the room.
I will now be bringing in Paul Lipinski. Paul, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, you may begin.
Thank you. Thirty-six hundred units figure about three people per unit, which is approximately ten thousand more people, which is about twenty-five percent of the increase in the city's population. What's missing in this plan is where's the water gonna come to support all these people? But, you know, we just had a brief on that we're gonna, you know, be having water rationing for people that already live here, yet we're gonna build more units for people that aren't gonna have water to support them. You know, California hasn't built a dam since the seventies. There's no reverse osmosis plant or any other water-producing or storage facilities that are planned to be built. Not to mention, you know, the state wants people to buy electric cars, and a lot of our electricity is hydroelectric. So there's a lot of holes in this plan. I think that we should address these. I've already sent my, my comments in, but that's something that nobody ever talks about. But I think it's a pretty big deal since, you know, you can live without food for a while, but you can't live without water. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other members of the public?
Did you not see any other hand up?
Okay, thank you. Let's bring it back again, as we know, this is a study session, it's back to council. One thing, because I'll tell you, you hear it here in town, for many, as I deal with other electeds in the county, or just last Friday with some of them at San Carlos, that is something that everybody hears, is water. How are we able to do this without that? And I know that it's brought into the report, right? When a budget comes online and all of that. But I think it really is, at a fundamental level, everyone's saying, hey, it's too crowded. Hey, what about electricity? Hey, what about water? And of course, the state mandates with the RENA numbers. So it's not that they're asking our permission, they're dictating, unless there's a better word I should choose, to what we must meet by a certain timeline. Can staff kind of help bring in the fold of kind of how, how that's kind of dealt with, please? I rambled, and I appreciate that, Director.
Yes, of course. Mr. Mayor, you did a very good job. So the state provided a overarching goal for every jurisdiction to meet. Part of the Housing Element Update is also a SEQA analysis. Part of the SEQA analysis that staff would undergo is to produce a water study to make sure that there's adequate water. As you mentioned, every city is fighting for the same water source. So through this water study, as evaluated through our SEQA analysis, we'll see how we can carefully and also strategically provide the water sources for the projected population increase.
Thank you. Councilor Medina.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to thank you and our director for answering the question that I had and also addressing our public comment from Mr. Lipinski. These are numbers that are mandated, I think might be the word, from the state, and there are penalties that could be quite costly if we don't meet those numbers. Now, the drought is changing the landscape clearly of what's going on here. And you bring up some, Mr. Lipinski brings up some excellent points. And I also, Mr. Mayor, hear the same thing in the community of, as we're looking at development. And the concern is, you know, where are we getting the water from? And we have to do the analysis as the project comes online. Right now, if we were to get thirty-six hundred units all at the same time, who knows? Do we have enough water? And the last time we looked at projects, we did have the water. But things change from year to year. So we have to evaluate things as they come in. But we have to, we're mandated to comply with the housing element, and that's why we're taking it forward.
Any other questions, comments from colleagues in regards to this topic, which is a study session? Vice Mayor, Mason.
Yeah, and I just wanna, I understand their concerns, and I think that that is something everyone's grappling with. But here in San Bruno, we are a working-class community, and a lot of our residents service residents as you go south in the peninsula. And you see job openings everywhere you go, all the hotels, the fast food restaurants, the restaurants. We went to Red Robin the other day, and they had like two staff members servicing the entire restaurant. You know, they need to live somewhere, and that's why I stress so much the need for very low income and low income, because everywhere that's a service industry, you know, has people, or you hope there's people working there, and they're able to have a good, decent living where they can live with dignity. And so I just, I think that hopefully we're able to balance all these things out. These are mandates, but I do think it is really important that we're looking at the industries that need workers and how we can help to help that industry here within San Bruno and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands up, then I want to go ahead and thank staff for their presentation and taking the questions. Thank you very kindly. Next, we will move on to under conduct of business. Item C, please.
Seven C, appointment of two city council members to the fireworks application review subcommittee.
I forgot, it's noted for me. So just as a recap, and I want to thank staff for getting this information. The last time this came up was on June eighth, 2021. Mr. Salazar and myself were on the Ad-Hoc Committee. And so we reported back at that time, and we made comments overview a little bit, and also said, both of us would concur that there may not be the need for that type of an Ad-Hoc Committee, because it's basically, and there was a variety of reasons, I won't articulate everything that was back on the tape. But there is a provision under item C, under Resolution two thousand and eight to sixty-seven, which is states, a city council subcommittee may, the word is may, review the applications and the city clerk's findings, and make recommendations to the city council. The topic comes to city council, your consent for a concurrence, I mean a vote, yes or no, to that. As we know, and was articulated by Councilmember Salazar, the phantom or TNT provide the paperwork. They go to mandatory, meaning they have to go through the process and the paperwork and the applications which are available. So the question comes up whether we do need to have an appointment. So really, there was not a vote or a concurrence or a majority that said, hey, going forward, maybe we don't need this. We don't need to take two colleagues to have on an Ad-Hoc Committee to review applications and turn it back to staff, and then staff to put it on consent. So that's what we're here for before, before you tonight, whether we wish to do that or just have staff do what they do at the fire police and city clerk's office and then have a consent as it normally does. So I'm not automatically going to appoint it, because I'm asking the question whether it's necessary. And again, we have the option of may, it's not a requirement. Councilor Medina.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That, yeah, that key word there is may. I haven't served on that review committee before, so I can't really say how much work is really involved. I do have a random question about, do we, do we ever look into making sure that those vendors are serving our community? Like, clearly, I know, you know, like cappuccino, it serves our community, but do all the, all the vendors, are they serving the community? And is that all within any of the review committees? Or it's, who does, who makes that determination?
Fair question. I'm gonna ask Councilmember Salazar, who's done it much longer than I. But I believe in the application process, yes, you have to look who you are. There are, I'm gonna go off memory, and what I heard, there are nine groups that are grandfathered. There are eighteen that are open. I think we had thirteen last year, maybe fourteen the year before. If it exceeds eighteen, then there is a lottery pool. But again, there are nine that are grandfathered that was within it unless we change that. So half were already grandfathered in, but yes, they're to be, and it is put in their application, you know, what are you doing? We, you know, who are you servicing and how are you servicing?
The part of the application requirements also is to submit a roster of members or in, for the support teams that also lists who's on the team and their senior residents.
Okay. Thank you, that's very helpful. I think that since it's the word may, that we could choose not to, and I would be in support of that. And I'll listen to my colleagues' undertakes.
Okay, next is Councilmember Hamilton.
My, the measurement that I'm using on this is, does having council members review this add any value? It seems like the, it seems like the process is, is pretty well done in terms of that there's, there's specific rules that need to be followed. And, and if we end up with too many, if we end up with too many applicants, it goes to a lottery, and that's not, it doesn't come down to a determination of council or anything like that. And if, you know, obviously, I haven't served on it either, on this committee either, but if the folks who have been serving on it can attest that we're really not adding any value here, then I see no reason to. And that's not a, that's not a knock on anybody, but it's, you know, sometimes the process doesn't need, need more people, and this might be one of those times.
No, I like to add value. No, but I think that's what Councilmember Salazar and I were saying last time, is it's not necessary, and it's not necessary, why are we having staff do something and we're doing something? The other thing, too, is they, when I say they, police and fire have The other thing too is they, when I say they, police and fire have man, or at least the fire marshal, has a mandatory meeting with all of those that are in process. And if they don't attend that meeting, then they don't come to us for a vote. So they have their, like you said, Councilmember Hamilton, they have their criteria and da-da-da-da. And I would attest that it's probably not necessary with the system in place. Vice Mayor Mason.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, so I don't know that I have a preference either way. I did want to just ask though, and because maybe my recollection's wrong, but I believe some of the conversation also was around that the PTAs also have the ability to have a stand, and that staff was going to reach out to those PTAs last year. And then I think we moved on and we didn't check back to see how that noticing went and whether the PTAs were in fact interested in hosting fireworks stands. And so I know it's been a year, and I actually don't know whether anybody did any research on this. But I am curious to know whether that occurred last year and what outcome of that was.
Good question. I don't know the answer. I know that, you know, if you meet the criteria, you can apply. We haven't had eighteen in a while. I know there was a PTO at CAP or maybe at sports, I don't recall. But yes, I believe they can't apply. They just, they need to do that. But I will refer to staff if they know, obviously, they do know more than me, but if they can help in that question.
Thank you, Mayor Medina and Vice Mayor Mason for your question. I do believe that our former city clerk did do outreach at this moment. I don't want to say the conclusion of that, just because I don't know precisely. But what the mayor did say is correct is that there's always an open invitation to various, to all groups in the community, and they're welcome to apply. We can make sure that there's continual outreach and a dedicated outreach to PTAs. But whether or not that happened last year without the former city clerk applying, I don't want to say no, but.
Okay, I would just say that even though it's an open invitation, the same applicants plan on this every year, which I think is great. But I think some of the PTAs in particular, I think, didn't even know that that was an option because it had been so long. And so if we could reach out to our public school PTAs and ensure that they're aware that they have that ability and that, you know, they would get to apply just like any other organization that's within those groups, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
And I would go further. If we do that, I think it should be to all schools within our community. They all have that ability.
I think it's the way it's written I'm fine with. But I thought it was targeted towards the public schools, but I could be wrong. Whatever, however it's targeted, I mean, however it's written, that would be great.
Councilmember Salazar.
So on the question, I just wanted to also reaffirm that the council's participation in the review doesn't add a lot of value. There is no veto power or any ability to question who's submitting. And so it's really just a very administrative, ministerial review of the documents, checking, making sure they're all there. I created a checklist, and you basically flip the packets and check off that everything is there. Staff has been very consistent and thorough in doing it. So I don't think that there's any value in that. And regarding the adding of different groups, it's, we've seen, we've seen a lot of the groups sort of start to lose interest over time. It's, it seems like an easy way to make money. But in my experience and just in my participation with the cappuccino sports boosters, it's hard to get volunteers. The organization does have to have its own tax ID, so it has to be a recognized organization in order to do business with the fireworks vendors. So, you know, those are all considerations. I don't know that all PTOs are established as nonprofits, but if they don't have a tax ID, then that's one of the first things they ask for on the application. So it might be limited to groups that are more formal and well-established. And I know, I believe one of the soccer groups reached out earlier this year to me because they weren't going to be able to do it, and they were looking for other folks. I reached out to the other booster groups at cappuccino, and nobody was really willing to make the commitment. So it is hard, and I know Marty can attest to it since he's been in the booth plenty of times.
It's a lot of work in that condensed time. Councilor Medina.
Thank you, Councilman Salazar. You're absolutely right. It's the Fourth of July, the week leading to the Fourth of July, a lot of people leave, and we're always rambling for people to work the booths. And it's a lot of work. My suggestion would be to contact the San Bruno Education Foundation, and maybe they can mass the PTOAs and PTOs together and then kind of split the work and split the money. And it still would be a great cause. And a little competition's not going to hurt anybody, so it's all good. That's my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. So is there, maybe if I ask it this way, is there anyone on the council at this time that feels this year that we should have a, I'll put it here, it's a subcommittee or ad hoc committee to do the administrative work as indicated? Is there anybody that? I'm a no. Mr. Salazar can tell, no, okay. All right, I at least see four of us saying no, no, thank you at this time. Anybody else that wants to chime in? So I have four at least confirmed that are, which is both Medina's, a Hamilton, and a Salazar, that we wish not to appoint two members of the city council for the fireworks application review. City Hall. You're on mute.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that direction is clear. Just as a suggestion on how we'll handle this in future years, because resolution two thousand and eight dash sixty-seven has the word may, and we're not admitting that, I think the most appropriate thing is set a staff bringing this action back every year. That when we conclude our policies and procedures conversation, we'll include a note in the policies and procedures that the council has requested not to have an annual subcommittee, but any council member can request a discussion of such, and we would acknowledge it. I think that'll be a clear process that ways documented. And of course, it'll be noted in the minutes for tonight's meeting. But, you know, five years from now, who's going to remember that just happened on May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two?
Good point, and thank you for bringing that up because you're right, it says may. So future councils can say, hey, things have changed, and maybe we, you know, we need to go back down that path. Okay, thank you. With that said, I think that's clear direction. Thank you, City Manager. And now we'll move on to item eight, comments from council members, colleagues. Councilor Medina.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So tomorrow, second, tomorrow at Bel Air Elementary, three fifty, Third Avenue, is Second Harvest. We've been doing this for quite a while. It's where residents or those people in need could show up between one forty-five and four o'clock and get some groceries for free. We're right around two hundred, two hundred families come in for the one event. And we also use volunteers. It's hot, and we can't work as well as we'd like to when it's real hot. And then I think you can have the honor of congratulating the cappuccino CCS teams, Mr. Mayor. I know it's been a busy week, but I'm not sure how well aware our community is of our softball and our baseball teams at CAP. Being in the CCS at the same time. And I don't want to, I don't want to stir your thunder because you are the alumnus there, so, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Medina. Councilmember Hamilton.
All right, I have two items, one happy and one decidedly not. First one, regarding the American Legion Pancake Breakfast. So please join us this coming Saturday, May twenty-eighth, at the American Legion for our monthly pancake breakfast. This event resumed last month after a long COVID-caused hiatus. It was very well attended last month, so we're back in action on a monthly basis. The American Legion Post is located at seven five seven San Mateo Avenue here in San Bruno. The event begins at eight AM this coming Saturday, and I hope you can join us. The other, the other item is a request. As we've all been reading in the news today, there was yet another reprehensible school shooting in Uvalde, Texas. I just checked, the death toll is up to twenty-one, including nineteen children who were murdered senselessly today in Texas at Robb Elementary School. And I would respectfully request that we adjourn tonight in memory of the victims of that reprehensible, senseless event.
And also as a note, at the White House, President Biden lowered the flags, which obviously has that proved, the federal buildings, et cetera, et cetera. And at City Hall as well, the City Hall flag to have mass in respect and honor of, I shouldn't say honor, respect and memory of those that were killed today. Thank you. Vice Mayor Mason.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to, I actually didn't genderize it so it can't be a discussion, but I did just want to ask also around the communication to the PTA now that baseball season, I guess summer season's starting, but whether there's been any communication out to them around the snack booth. There had been, there had been a request last year to ensure that the parking wreck department informed the PTAs that it is available. And I don't know what happened with that and whether there was any follow-up. And I commend the women, and it is women, who are at the snack bar during the baseball games for hours on end because it is a selfless job, and they volunteer to do it all day. But they're not there every day, so there might be some opportunity for the PTAs, especially in those coming summer months, to make some extra money for their schools who really so desperately need it. I also wanted to thank Recology for bringing back the compost program that was brought up at our last meeting. I'm glad that that was communicated, and I'm happy to see that they are bringing that back again. The San Bruno Education Foundation had their third annual funders around May fourteenth. We haven't had a full meeting since then. And I just wanted to comment that they did a fabulous job. And hopefully, they get the date out for next year so that the community can put this date on their calendar. As a reminder to those who have been watching, you don't have to be the parent of a school-aged child to attend to support your local education foundation. And this is a group of volunteers, they are not paid, who have been working for years to build up the education foundation. So this was kind of a symbol of all the work that they have been doing. And a lot of those who started the foundation are actually still on the foundation running it. So I'm just really proud to be a part of it and to have attended, and hopefully, we'll see this becoming an annual event. And then just also wanted to thank the city staff who's been working so thoughtfully on bringing more diversity in events from the Dia de los Muertos all the way to the Lunar New Year, and now really excited for the June eleventh event that is celebrating Juneteenth. And then the Polynesian dancers that are going to open up our festivities. So a lot of thoughtfulness is coming into the planning, and it's really, really appreciated by, I think, the residents of San Bruno. And then lastly, I just want to concur with Councilmember Hamilton's request. There's just no words, so if we could close in memory of those who passed away today, that'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Seeing no other hands, I just want to say, because I did state it, so in case I'm incorrect, the compost, there was one last year on August of twenty twenty-one. So to my knowledge, it just wasn't well-attended. So it hasn't, it would never have ceased to my understanding any year. I do want to just, you know, I'll just make it quick. We're going to talk about the Community Day that, I'm sorry, not the Community Day, Community Drop-Off Day that occurred. And then that'll be at the next council meeting, and that can be more identified with more detail. But want to thank all of those that were present from staff and those at the church and everybody else that participated and volunteered. Thank you. And then also, I do want to say happy graduation to everyone that is graduating. Some who maybe have young foes here on the council that are celebrating a graduation or from our college to our high school, to our junior high, to our fifth graders, to our kindergarteners, or even the preschoolers. A happy graduation to each and every one. Best of wishes as you embark upon a new chapter, whatever that may be. Wish you great success and hope. The other thing is, as we, let me make this clear before I go to the last part. This city council will be going back into closed session. I'm going to read a couple items that we definitely will be, because we did not, we weren't able to conclude in the first closed session. Conference with legal counsel, initiation of litigation pursuant to government code, section five four nine five six point nine D four. There is one case, if there is reportable out and from that, we would be coming out from closed session to general session again for a report out if required. But also, I want to add these other two items, that conference with real property negotiator pursuant to government code, section five four nine five six point eight. There are two items on that. They are for properties APN zero two zero one four two two three oh and zero two zero one four two zero four, as well as APN zero two zero one four one four oh. So I listed three property items there. And so just that it is clear what items will be going into and are available for discussion in closed session. And again, we may be reporting out on the one item, and which means, Council, you would need to, we would need to reconvene back out here and have a report out from the city attorney if necessary and required. If there is a reportable, it is required. With that said.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
Can I ask, just logistically, will we get a new Zoom or do we go back to the four PM Zoom?
Excellent question, Mr. Hamilton. City Hall.
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmember Hamilton. I didn't hear the precise question, but I think it was logistics about reporting back out, which is.
No, it was about, once we conclude from here, which link do you want us to go back to to continue our closed session?
The initial link that we use for the closed session discussions, and so that should remain active. I will test that right after we conclude this meeting. But I want to ask the city attorney a question, which was, does the report out need to happen if there's a necessity for a report out? Do we need to reconvene this meeting, or can we do that at the next regular meeting? It's just a logistical issue about staff keeping this current public link open for the duration of whenever the closed session is over.
Great question.
Thank you, Javon. I did check that earlier, and the state law does require that the report of initiation of litigation be made at the same meeting in open session at the end of the closed session. So unfortunately, we do have to do it at this meeting.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, and we will leave this link active. Staff will put up a note that the city council's in closed session, and should there be a reportable item, we'll reactivate this link. Thank you very much. And we'll actually make sure that we edit the video so someone doesn't have to wait forty-five minutes if they are watching the minutes of this or the video this meeting.
Thank you, and thank you for everybody getting logistics. If we were all sitting there, then it would be easy to walk in the next room. But then I do want to adjourn this meeting to the regular city council meeting, which would be held on June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, at seven PM. I know there's been a request to adjourn in memory of, but I'd also like to expand it because there've been, and maybe this isn't the great get on this topic, but there've been a lot of deaths. but there've been a lot of deaths in many schools and in many places of worship and education and in transportation. It just seems to boggle the mind that you turn on the news and then you're just taken back again. And it is sad to know that people go to work, people go to pray, people go to school, people go to teach, and they don't come home. And at some point, there has to be enough. That's just on my personal view. But with that, then for all of this that we have lost in senseless acts as today, I would ask us to adjourn in their memory and to give our thoughts and support to their families. For a moment of silence, please. Thank you for that moment and honoring all of those and remembering them and their families. So with that, colleagues, we will go back to the original 4:00, 4:00 PM Zoom link to continue our closed session. See you there momentarily.
I believe that we are all here and we will go ahead and reconvene the San Bruno City Council meeting of May 24th at 9:19 PM. And we do have a reportable action and I will turn it over to the city attorney to report that out, please.
Thank you very much. This is to report that on the last closed session item, initiation of litigation. City council did unanimously vote to approve joining litigation already filed by the county and many other cities in San Mateo County against Monsanto over PCB contamination and cleanup costs. So that does conclude the litigation report from the closed session and thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you everyone and thank you staff and that will conclude this meeting and the next meeting will be June 14th, 2022 at 7 o'clock. Meeting is adjourned. Take care.